And so this is the second half of our April council meeting, started April 13th. It's Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. And they will call roll here, if you would please, Lori.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Mayor Pilon.
Present.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Present.
Councilmember Alders.
Here.
And City Planner Stockman.
Here.
So we have a revised agenda here in front of us tonight. Councilmember Rainville, did you get a copy of that?
Mr. Mayor, no I did not. So if you could just let me know, I need to change up my home.
All right, item number two A is resolution for the Elk River Youth Softball Association under consent agenda. Item number three A, quarterly report financial. Four, planning and zoning is the same, property line split, brand name storage and ordinance amendments. Five, public works, truck, crack seal, gravel and dust control, and seasonal workers. Six, recycle center, clerk's presentation and RCA, and actually I think there's two RCAs from Councilmember Rainville now. And, is that right?
Mayor, council, I put that second RCA under greater good was where I was thinking we could talk about that because that has to do with recycling days.
All right. Probably work either way, but we can.
Greater good. Greater good it is.
And then administration, Facebook and metro animal control. And greater good, we have RCA for shredding. Anything else?
RCA for what?
We just talked about shredder, shredding paper for the recycle day.
Oh, I hear the recycling, but, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would like to add, under for the good of council, also related to the recycling days and may have that participation by council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I think we went through participation one little last time, the time before we met, where we all agreed to participate in that. Didn't we all talk about it already?
About so.
I thought so too. Mary, don't you remember that?
I, I, I apologize, I did not, so, I would just, if, if everyone is committed to attending, we can take that off.
All right.
As far as the commitment.
And where are we discussing the P and Z interview process?
Oh, yeah.
Do we do that tonight? I haven't heard what we're, we're doing, so.
Okay.
Can I put that instead?
Instead of participation, P and Z will. Interview.
All right. So that is the agenda. I will accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it. Hang on, a motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
Mayor Pilon.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
All right, we have a meeting policy here. We've amended our agenda, so we'll be following it as amended. Business from the floor is welcome and allotted for our agenda. If it's not something that's on the agenda, come up to the podium, give your name and address, and then you get three minutes to express your opinion or ask questions. We do have agendas. If you don't have one, we have agendas in the back table there. We do ask that people sign in, and then please silence your cell phones, if you would please. All right. Item number one, consent agenda. Elk River Youth Softball Association care and use of the fields. We have a resolution 2021-19. With the conditions. Anybody?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
If there are no questions in regards to the resolution 2021-19, I would move the council approval judge of 21-19, approving Elk River Youth Softball Association and care and use of softball fields.
All right, we have a motion. I'll second that. Motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 A roll call.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Mayor Pilon.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
All right, we have the quarterly financial report. Couple weeks to look at, anybody have any questions on that? Seeing and hearing none. We'll move on. Pete, Linda?
I like that.
Planning and zoning. Now, item A is listed as property, property line change to split 10 acres off an 80 acre parcel. And so we are going to ask, Planner Stockman has presented us with a lengthy report here, a lot of details. And so I'm going to ask Planner Stockman to walk us through where we're at with this situation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We've really gotten nowhere since I have not received any documents from the Drydens. My job as a zoning administrator is to administer or work with people regarding what the requirements are for subdivisions, conditional use permits, whatever the case may be. We met several times, shared with them what I was looking for. We needed to start with the easement or road. We don't know if it's a natural road. If, we don't know if they own this strip of land, if it's an easement situation, who it was deeded to, if it's been properly recorded, those kinds of things. That will dictate how the property is subdivided. And it's critical and required that they submit a certificate of survey showing property boundaries. They need to survey the whole 80 acres in order to split a piece from it. They cannot, they do not have, if they do not have street frontage there, they need to create it. So the cul-de-sac may need to be added if the street, if the 66 feet already exists. So we no longer allow access via easement situations. It has to be a permanent road easement dedicated to the city. So just generally speaking, I'm not sure why there's, I guess, you know, hesitation or, well, I know that it's a costly process, there's no question about that. But when we're dealing with the state and the county and the city and MinDOT and wetland issues, there's a whole host of local governments that have to be involved. And I think it's perceived by a lot of residents that this is an easy process. And yeah, it seems easy when you look and you say, yeah, I just want to move a lot line from north, south to east, west, or whatever the case may be. But there's many steps involved. And normally, you know, we don't come before you, or a resident doesn't come before you unless there's something to present and something to approve. And we haven't received anything. I have nothing to evaluate. I don't know yet if that, you know, 66 feet exists as a public road or not. If it does, that helps us out. If it doesn't, then we need to create it. And so, you know, these aren't things that I'm making up. This is an ordinance, a city code that the city council adopted. And my job is to work with people on trying to achieve these things. And I guess it's, you know, maybe in experience, there's a lot of people in Alvin that have never split property, never developed property. Or maybe if they have, it hasn't been done since township days, so some of the processes are quite a bit different. They did used to allow access by easement only, you know, back in the day. But without any supporting documents to look at or review or approve, we just can't move forward. And, you know, this surveyor friend of theirs, I don't know for certain, but he may, you know, maybe is not a registered surveyor licensed in Minnesota. Because I believe that if he had been, he probably would have provided that. But he called Shane and talked to the city engineer about what was needed and I just, we can't move it forward without a, a document, a survey, something. We've got to have a survey. So people are hesitant, I get that, to spend the money. If, you know, they hire a survey, a lot of times the surveyors can help them through the process and work with the city. So I guess with that, I'll just give it back to you and see if you have any questions, thoughts on the matter.
Well, I, you know, obviously, the, one of the big questions is, where do we go from here? Something hasn't been either communicated or the way it's communicated, we haven't connected. So we have people that are trying to do something. We've got what ultimately will end up being four lots, it looks like here. We've got three pin numbers, and then there's a fourth one, once the 10 acres is broken off. But they, I, I think the, the question has, and, and your timeline here goes back to January. Somehow we haven't connected to the point that we're all in agreement, these steps need to be taken. And, and I think that the Drydens want to get moving on their project. And need to know what, what has to happen next. Is that fair to say?
I think.
Pete, would you come up to the, so we can get it on our recording here? Hit the bottom of that microphone, should turn green there.
I think that what we want to.
You are Deb Dryden?
Yeah, sorry, Deb Dryden, 6660, 6660 Viking, that's new to me, so.
Thank you.
We're trying to not do a minor subdivision. We have two separate pieces of property, and we sold our, our son the house that's within the 80. So we'd like to pull a 10 off mostly for mortgage reasons, so he's not, his interest rate would be cheaper if he has a 10 acre parcel versus an 80. We don't plan on developing that for many years, because now our daughter lives at the other end, and we're at the north end.
And you're on, on lot one there?
I'm on, right now I'm on that 20, the, the two 10s, on the 20 that's right on.
You're, you're right out on Viking.
Yeah, we're living in that, there's a little yellow house there that we're living in right now. So the first step, we, we thought we would just split that 10 off of that. And for our son, he's actually, we've already closed on it, he's living in it right now.
How does he get back there? Where's, where's the entrance off of 20?
The, I think the difference in the driveway, there's 33 feet that's, that we, we acquired from Doug Howell, and it's Torrance property. Now, the other half of that, the other, the east 33 feet is abstract. So when you go and you look at it, the county, it's a little, because you've got Torrance certificates you're looking at and abstract. So that might be where it's at. We actually, we actually owe, now we purchased the, the east so we can, you know, if, I don't remember if I've recorded that east part, doesn't matter now because we own it, so we can, we can give up 33 feet along that.
So the, the easement for the city for future roadage, the 66 feet, you can legally now?
Yes. It's the 33 feet on, that we purchased from Doug Howell, or purchased, we got, we actually had easement through there before 22 came through, easement. And then in 96, I believe, he deeded us the 33 feet off of his side of that. The, the driveway's there, it's been there 30 some years.
So let me, let me stop there. So Liz, if that's the case, if they've got 66 feet, does that resolve one of these issues?
Well, partly. It has to be deeded to the city in a form of a permanent roadway easement.
And you're aware of that?
Yeah. Nope.
We talked, remember when I talked about the conditional use permit? And then if the, the allowance that was just approved over the past summer that would defer the paving requirements?
You did say that.
Okay, yeah.
So a driveway that's been there 20, 30 some years, it's been being used as a, as a driveway, it's going to continue, no, it's just not us, it's our son. Not changing anything there. Nothing's changing.
What's changing is that you were adding a lot. He has to be provided access. The ordinance requires a turnaround, so there would have to be some sort of a cul-de-sac or a, like a hammerhead there for a turnaround.
And we have lots allowed that it's acceptable.
So that would, yeah, that's not a big deal. And then my understanding was, yeah, you wanted to build a home right on that.
Well, we, we want to do this eight, we don't want a minor subdivision. You keep adding, you want to add that 20.
We don't want a major subdivision.
We don't want, we don't want four lots.
You keep adding 100 acres together, that's not what's going to happen. Tell me that right now, it won't happen.
Yeah, that's fine, you, nobody can force you to do it.
We'll, we'll sell it. We'll move on somewhere else, we have to. But we're not going to divide the, the 80 acre parcel, it won't be divided. We're not selling lots, we're not building roads.
No, I never, I never suggested that you subdivide the entire 80 acres. What I'm saying is.
You imply that the road goes all the way through to our other 40 acres on the other end.
Right.
That come out of uranium, uranium streak.
Right.
We're not doing that.
No, I understand, you don't want to put a road through, you're not ready for that, you don't want it, I get that. But you have to survey the boundary of the 80 acres in order to split the 10 out of it. And you have to provide access, street access, to the 10 acres. So you can't have the two lots, currently that driveway comes down, it goes through your 80, there's a house there, right?
Correct.
So you're, when you take the 10 out of there, you're ending up with another lot, so you'll have a 70 and a 10. So both lots have to have access, so you need to create that cul-de-sac, that public street for both lots to touch. And I know we talked about how it, it only needs to be 75 feet on that cul-de-sac.
Right, and that's what we did.
But we talked to, the communication broke down when we contacted a registered land surveyor.
Okay.
And he contacted apparently you, and he came up with a whole list of stuff to do with a $5,000 retainer even, before he'd even start.
That's interesting, because the only thing they asked me was to send them a sketch of what you wanted to do.
Well, they came back with a, probably 15 or 20 items that was requested, including surveying every building on every lot, every sewer on every lot, every well on every lot.
And the sewers complying? Why, why do they have to comply?
Well, that's part of the certificate of survey process, so when you're creating another lot, doesn't matter if it's five acres or 70, you have to prove that it can support a septic system, primary and a backup.
On a new lot, yes.
Yeah, so.
It's not what you're implying, again.
Pardon me?
It's not what you're implying. You're implying that the two existing sewers have to be surveyed also.
No, you don't have to unless, I mean, if you're doing a lot line reconfiguration, yes, then you would have to survey the two 10s. If you're going to leave those as they are, and leave the north, south line there, that's fine, you don't have to involve those. But the whole 80 acres has to be surveyed, that's part of the certificate of survey. The buildings, the septic, the well, all has to be surveyed on a certificate of survey. And then it needs to show, you know, the ownership of that, or the, the legal documentation of those two 33 foot strips. And if they're not deeded to the city in the form of a public road easement, then that would have to happen under the current ordinance.
So I mean, just a quick claim de, deeding that to the city, the 33 feet, that's what you're looking for?
66.
66 altogether. Because, because it's abstract and torrent, it's got to be two. You don't, well. I worked at the county for years, they don't put them, usually don't put them together, because they're different. Abstract is way different than the Torrance piece. Torrance is a certificate that they type on and.
Yeah, we can, I mean, if it needs to be deeded separately or whatever.
That's what's making it confusing when you look at it, it's.
But ultimately, with the abstract and the torrent, it can be deeded separately, but the
Right.
result is you get 66 feet deeded to the city.
Correct.
And you understand that, and you're okay with that?
The 33 feet from Doug Howell is on county maps, you can look that up anywhere you want.
I believe it's, yeah.
But, but it's something we can, we can get straightened out.
Exactly. The, the.
That part's understood and agreeable.
Okay. But when we, when we purchased in January, when we purchased the two 10s, and we want to change that lot line, that pushed us into a major subdivision, which calls for milars, and it just shoots us up to 15.
Mitigation of.
$15,000 worth of, and it's like, this is not worth it to do that.
So again, backing off here.
Yeah.
You purchased two 10s. And, and you've got the 80. Which you, breaking out 10 for your son.
Yes.
And you have 40 to the east of that? Or another 40 here somewhere?
Oh, yes.
The other 40.
So you're a property owner with 40, 80?
No, just, just an.
The other 40 is my daughter's.
Yeah.
But you, right now have, you bought the two 10s.
Yeah, correct.
And so independent of everything else you own, you just want to do something on those, with those two 10s, you want to subdivide that?
We just want to move a lot line on those two 10s.
Okay. So the question is, if they just want to do that on the two 10s, does it have to tie into the other properties?
Correct, that's what, that's what we don't, we want to do separate things.
And that was my question to begin with, is we need to know the status of those two 33 foot strips before, because if we have to involve one of the 10s, if, to take that away from it, if the two 33 foot strips are already separate from the two 10s you bought,
Mm-hmm.
then we don't have to involve them. But if you're doing a lot line reconfiguration, they have to be surveyed, just like the rest of it. We can potentially do it at two separate times.
Okay.
So that you don't have to plat.
That's.
But it's going to take a little longer.
And that's okay?
And if that's okay with you, then that's.
You don't want to plat.
We don't want to plat.
A little longer is okay?
They're so expen, they're, they're so expensive, but we don't want that.
So, but what you're saying, that if you do it at two separate times, we, we take care of the abstract and torrent, get the 66 feet all straightened out.
Okay.
And then separately, we take care of this lot line, the way you want it. Takes a little longer, but then there's no plating involved.
Okay.
So, correct.
Is that okay?
That's okay, but the wetland delineation is not an option.
Why? We're not, we're not moving any ground, we're not touching soil?
On the two, on the 10s here, Liz, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so I told them, they could do a partial delineation, I would not have them go to the expense to delineate all the wetlands on the whole 80 and everything. Really, the only areas of concern is how it affects the new 15. You wanted to keep 15, right, of the 20? I had it reversed on this map.
Yes, yeah.
So anyway, but yeah, so the concern is not for the, your house, now that your son bought. That parcel, it doesn't really matter where the wetlands are, because the house is there.
Okay.
What is concerning is the part where it crosses, the driveway crosses the wetland, and then anything on the 20 acres that would be kind of near where the lot line is going to go, and on this new lot that you want to build on, okay, so.
So where, where the.
So item B.
Why, why is that concerning?
Well, it's, I'm just saying.
The road's been there for 35 years.
No, I understand, but.
It's been there longer than 22's been there.
So the way we evaluate delineations is when it involves, you've got either three lots or more will trigger that, or an acre of disturbance. And just about every house, whether it be the driveway plus, you know, the disturbed area where the home goes, is at an acre. If you can show that you're potentially not disturbing that, we can maybe talk, but.
To disturb it right now.
Pardon me?
There are no plans right now to disturb.
No, I don't mean, well, I don't mean.
Were the, you mean, like if we're going to potentially build, we're going to potentially build on the 15, and we disturb the land to build a driveway there, is that what you're, I'm turning.
Yeah, by disturb, I mean, yes, anything that gets graded or, you know.
So the house, the foundation for the house.
House driveway.
What's getting the plat, why, why wouldn't that fall under, under the building permit?
Well, it does, but it's also, you know, state and county, it's watershed district.
Yeah, we'll deal with it when we build the house.
So, what, again, I'm not making this stuff up, this is.
So, so Liz, let's stop there, so.
Okay.
This is where I'm trying to get, so everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
If, if they're saying, do we need to do this before we apply for building permit for a house? And if, and they can wait until they are moving ground for a house, or, or apply for that, then they do the delineation, is that sufficient? Or are you saying, just by dividing this property up, they have to do the delineation, whether they're building or not?
Yeah, it's triggered by the subdivision, yes.
But it's a subdivision.
But it's not a subdivision, it's a.
Okay, I'm, I'm not going to disturb any land then.
No, it is a subdivision. Anything is a subdivision, even if, if you call it a lot split, it's still a subdivision.
A lot line change, you mean?
It, yeah.
Because we got two lots.
Right.
And we're changing the lines.
Right.
We're making it better, because the way, the barn is sitting on the line, so where the barn is sitting on the line, you can't even get to that 10 that's there.
Right, no, I, I totally agree.
And I understand if you want to disturb that, that, I can understand it, but with nothing being disturbed, we're making it better for the city.
I agree, you're making it better.
Okay.
And you're making the access better.
Yes.
And you're taking a driveway off of Viking?
No.
Well, we don't have to do that.
Okay, well, it's possible, the county has to review it, and they may make you do that. If you're, if you're, if you have that 66 feet, they may say you have to move your driveway.
For the yellow house that would have to come off the driveway?
They could say that, yeah. I'm not saying they will, but they could.
So that, that's an action that I want to find out. If the 66 feet is, is deeded on the west side there, would the county make them change the driveway to the yellow house over to the 66 feet rather than off of Viking? That's a possibility, but that's county, we, we don't control that.
So at this point, I would say we can talk, I can talk with the wetland specialist about the delineation. I'm saying it's required, which I know it is, but if there's any way we can minimize the air. but if there's any way we can minimize the area that you have to do, um, and with your, see, the other thing to consider is the number of lots that, um, you're serving overall. You're gonna have four lots that are coming off of this, you know, future cul-de-sac.
I thought it was, I thought it was only three.
So.
We can, we can call the seventy an outlot if you'd like, 'cause it won't be built on.
Yeah, that would be great, if you wanna do that.
We're only doing, now we're down to two lots.
Well, although I don't think you can do an outlot, um, unless you plat it, so you don't wanna get into that.
How did Aings do their outlot?
Pardon?
How did Aings do their outlot?
Aings platted. Yeah, they did. Mm-hmm. And so did Lystico, yeah. Because Lystico's had a total of five lots, and two were outlots and three were buildable.
So the question at this point is, is we, we understand what the Drydens are trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
And we're here to help them try to accomplish that at minimal cost and minimal confusion.
Right.
I don't mind the cost if there's a benefit to it. But I have seen no benefit to.
Right, so, so cost-effective benefit, minimal where possible. Um, and one option is to talk to the wetland specialist, say, here's all they're trying to do. What's the minimum that's, that's required to be compliant with the law?
Correct, yeah.
That make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And, and, and right now, the intention is the seventy that's left down there after splitting off for the son is, in effect, an outlot, but we're not gonna plat things out at this point.
Correct.
If that's legal.
So it's one big vacant piece, right?
No, no structure, right? Nothing on it.
A good chunk of it's wet, anyway.
That's why the ten is, is taking in all the buildings that my son's got.
And ten's good for, you know, accommodating all the accessory buildings.
It's actually almost eleven. By the time we figured it all out, it's.
Oh, is it? Okay, alright.
Yeah, so that accommodates the buildings. So, son's good. We get sixty-six feet. I don't provide truck here. Get that done. We, we minimize the delineation, so it makes sense from a cost standpoint to you. You get to do what you want, and we've resolved a great portion of what you gave us to look through last writing.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we can move it forward. Uh, we just, I need, you know, if you want me to work with the surveyor, if you wanna just relay things yourself, whatever you prefer, you can share my number.
Uh.
Yeah, do, do that. Send it to, in writing, and then I can meet with the surveyor. So mostly I wanna get those, those two, those two thirty-three foot, the sixty-six feet deeded to the city.
Um, right, with a turnaround of some kind, right.
With the cul-de-sac.
And we, we need to be able to get fire trucks back.
Yes.
You know, it, I can, we get a lowboy down there that's very long, so I mean, fire trucks.
Fire trucks have been down there before.
So is that, so I'm, I'm kinda dropping down notes here, so.
So, Councilmember Alders.
So first step was, we need to get the paperwork on the sixty-six feet and that deeded to the city?
Well, part of that would just come out as part of the certificate of survey.
You guys are aligned with that, correct?
Would show the easement status and, yeah.
And then along with that, number two, I got a cul-de-sac needs to be added at the end of that.
Yes, a turnaround, right.
Turnaround?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Ryan, you good with that? Okay, and then the survey of the eighty acres, what's, what's gonna happen there? What, what do they need to do?
So, well, they basically need to survey all of it. I'll talk to, well, see, it's four. I'd like to try to avoid having you do the lot line reconfiguration separately, because, I mean, it just makes the most sense to do it together, but I don't wanna create a precedent where we're allowing a four-lot split.
So it, it may be easier, but it's com- more complicated.
Yeah.
So, right now, we're going for least complicated. Are you in a hurry? Are you building in a month?
We, we were eventually, but we were, our log house was supposed to start in, in April, but we pushed it back 'cause it wasn't.
Okay, so at this point, while it might, may be more efficient to do them together, it's a little more complicated. So if we do it separately, there's the best chance minimizing the delineation and not complicating the split. Does that work for you?
So call it two separate things.
Well, maybe, yeah. Let me talk to the city engineer a little more about it, because.
Cause we got three, we want one more.
You don't wanna send the surveyor out there twice to do, you know.
Right, and a lot of other stuff that was on our list from the surveyor that he got somewhere, he had to do, survey all the buildings on both lots. He had to survey the well, the septic, a complacency test on the septics, and, and he, he also was going to do the wetland delineation on the whole property and soul borings for a proposed building. We don't know where on a hundred acres we can put the building yet.
Right, we know that, but the ordinance does require that you just show at least somewhere where it can support a septic. So if you do borings on your new lot. Pardon me?
Where do I do the borings?
Wherever you want, wherever they think is the best spot.
Your, your, your new lot, where you're gonna put the cabin, the log home?
Yeah, then what, where you can't put it there, or you do borings again?
Whether they just want it, that it's buildable, it's gonna, it's gonna support the sewer, is what you want.
Somewhere on that lot, you can support the sewer system and a backup.
Right.
You'd have to do it anyway for.
And, and it, and it doesn't work in that spot, you're gonna have to find, you're gonna have to keep doing it till you find, except for the real amount.
Well, yeah, I can find a spot that it'll pass, but might not be where I wanna put the building in this.
Lot of times, they'll do a boring where you wanna put the house anyway to see, you know, you're gonna have to determine. That's the other thing the surveyor does, is determine what your lowest floor elevation has to be. So they may have to shoot some, you know, overflow elevations of some of these surrounding wetlands.
So can, 'cause, 'cause what I'm hearing again is, might have to, possible, can you make a list and say, here's what needs to be done, so that we have something concise, and we're not going back to the surveyor that says, I gotta do all hundred acres, and I gotta do everything, and it's gonna cost thousands of dollars? Can we, can we nail it down, and then you and Shane and the surveyor and the Drydens all agree? And we keep this thing moving forward?
Well, this, yeah, I mean, this is the challenge. I mean, yeah, I can provide a list from, I can provide a five or six or ten-page list, but not everything applies to every lot, so that's the, you know, that's why I do like to sit down.
We're trying to get it down to a, a list that says, what do they need to do with their surveyor right now? Not all the possibilities, but.
Right.
You know, we've got the property broken off for the son. Is there anything else that has to be done on that? If so, put it on the list.
Yep.
The seventy acres is gonna be an outlot. Is there anything that has to be done to make that of record? And then on the, the two tens, what needs to be done to, we get sixty-six feet in there with a turnaround? Um, county decides where the driveway comes in, and then there's a, a buildability for where they wanna put the new house.
Right, if you can get a copy of the recorded documents from those two thirty-three foot strips, yeah, so I can have the engineer look at that, and, and then I can better guide you as to what that surveyor needs to do up in that area. But, um, and that's, you know, that's part of, and, um.
So now the, the survey on the eighty, we had that surveyed in eighty-six from Kane and Associates. I mean, so, a survey like that, it's already been done?
No, that's, wouldn't be good anymore, um, but I don't think they even exist, that company. Sometimes, if you're able to use the same company, it's a benefit.
I don't think there is either.
I don't think they are either. Do you think you're gonna use Bogart then, or you're not sure?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, we kinda just.
I'd like to use Hawkinson, but apparently you can't.
Yeah, they won't.
We work with, yeah, we work with Shane before, but on different things.
Okay, well, I'll get you a list of everything I can think of, okay?
We haven't talked about park and rack. Is there, are parks and trails? Is there park fees and trails for this yet, or?
Well, when you're creating a lot, yes, it applies to any new lot, whether it's a minor subdivision or a plat.
The new lot, not the existing lots. But if there's an additional lot being formed, that's when the park and trail fee comes in.
So, so the additional lot would be our son's house? That's when it comes into play?
No, the additional lot is gonna be the vacant lot. But the way I, you actually have two new lots, but the way I'm looking at it is, you started with three total,
Mm-hmm.
the two tens and the eighty, and the net increase is just one.
Correct.
So that's what I would propose if the council were to agree with that.
And that the seventy would be a.
Yes, that, what she said is, yeah.
The seventy would be the new lot, basically, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So there'd be one park and trail fee?
Okay.
Twenty-five hundred, yeah. Twenty, two thousand plus five hundred. Does that sound okay? And, you know, please call if you have any questions. The surveyor can call.
So, back to the Drydens. As you understand it, does this make sense at this point?
So far.
All right.
Well, I just don't understand why when people come up with things like this, why don't we just have the city engineer look it over after we meet with Liz, and then he could provide a list to every resident as to what they need? It would be very simple to get quotes from surveyors, and then a lot of this would be solved.
Yeah.
Yeah, we tried to start going, moving forward back in January, and it's just, it's kinda snowballed.
But like I said, without a document for us to review, we can't, we, we have nothing to evaluate here. Uh.
Yeah, well, we left, we were like, geez, we don't wanna do a major subdivision on just getting one lot. So that's, that's kinda where we're sitting.
So we, we've made a progress.
Yes, yes.
And, and we see light at the end of the tunnel.
Okay.
Um, do you agree?
Yes, we get a, a list, that would be great.
And then, and then Kristin, to your point, um, you know, how we improve this process is a subject for another meeting, but for right now, we wanted to make sure that we got Liz and Shane and the Drydens and the surveyor all on the same page. And with this list, as long as it's not a ten-page list, with this list, we should be there.
I got about thirty pages here, so if we're down to ten, I'm.
Progress.
Progress.
Does, does this make sense?
Yes.
Liz?
Yeah, I actually did send you a list. Uh, I don't know if you have all the.
Is that his thirty-page deal in there?
No, I think he's talking about this report.
This is what, thirty-three pence that I got from you.
Yeah.
Is the list in there?
Probably.
Here.
Why is this, why are we getting this feedback?
Can I say, if someone's phone is next to the speaker?
Joel?
There is. We'll see.
All right, so Drydens, are you content at this point?
Right now, yeah.
I won't say happy, but, but. You, you see this working out better than when you walked in here?
Yes.
Okay. Liz, this makes sense? Based on everything you said to us?
It's all good.
We, we can move forward and, and, uh, if, if something goes haywire, then contact Lori. Work with Lori and Liz, and the council can get involved if we need to. But it looks like right now, between Liz and your surveyor and Shane, we should, we should be in good shape. All right, everybody happy in the council? Mary, you still with us?
Yes, I am.
All right, well, it took a little while, but I think we made a lot of progress, so thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, guys.
All right, and Josh walked out. Land name storage, phase two and three, CUPs, variance, and lot reconfiguration. Thank you, guys. Thanks for your patience. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Cody's.
It is not.
I wonder if it's, if the, it's up too high or something?
Feedback usually comes from a mic and a speaker, so.
A lot of times, it's on, if, depending on where that is in conjunction to speaker. We talked about getting these speakers moved back further, so they're not near our microphones. And I think our tables are down, normally will back further this way. Liz, why don't you move your, over to this other side?
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
So far, so good. All right. All right, name brand.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think we're set to go here. We've got some conditions of approval, but Mr. Peterson's done a good job at addressing the majority of the issues regarding stormwater and revisions to the site plan. In your packet, there was a graphic, a couple graphics. Uh, yeah. Wanna be sure you understand where that Nova Brick is going to go and that we did address that fire truck turnaround. So the intention is to have Nova Brick only on the east side of Phase Three, all the buildings, and then the northerly two buildings of Phase Two. My text, uh, did not support what my graphic showed. So the intention, I had to go back to the meeting video and listen to it again. So it was, we ended up at all the east ends of the buildings that are visible, basically, from, you know, Melvin Nursery side. So it's a hundred percent of five ends of the building. And.
Actually, seven ends.
Five, six, seven ends, right.
All right, so with that, um, you have the other conditions before us, any?
Yeah, all the conditions is outlined in the findings of fact. Mr. Peterson will be going forward with a grading permit before he gets his actual building plans approved. So Attorney Ruby will be drafting a grading agreement similar to the one that he used in Phase One.
All right. Accept a motion to, uh, on this item? Councilmember Rainville, did I hear you say something?
Yes, this is the mayor. Uh, I just have a question or a comment. And I know that we talked about it in his last proposal for, for storage unit, but we talked about color scheme, and a color scheme that would fit into the area, um, and we ended up with blue again. And I don't, no, if there's anything we can do to request, um, a color other than that blue. We talked about colors that are natural-looking, that would, um, complement the buildings that are close to them. And, uh, I, I, I don't know where that, my dad didn't get follow-through on, unless my memory is shot, but I, I believe we talked about that. We even talked about having, uh, you know, fake windows on the end, edge, ends of some of the buildings to make them look, uh, to more near other buildings in the community, uh, instead of just these block, cement block buildings.
I, I do know we had talked about earth tones. Um, I'm not certain Mr. Peterson's here tonight, so, um, what, changing the colors of Phase Two and Phase Three, what would that do to your scheme if we were to go more earth tones than the bright blue?
Yeah, I believe we did have a conversation about this before, and we agreed that blue wasn't earth tone, because the water's blue and the sky is blue.
Mr. Mayor, yeah.
It's part of my branding, and I, I, I don't, I'm not looking to. It's part of my branding, and I, I, I don't, I'm not looking to have, you know, a product that doesn't have continuity from one face to another.
Planner Stockman?
Yeah, he's correct, we did bring the color...
Plat.
Specific, yeah, back to P and Z, and we did talk about it, yeah. So, it was specifically approved as blue, I do remember that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
We need to be really careful of this, 'cause once it's done, it's done. Like, we've got this big build, in that blue building on our road that stands out, and we want, we want some continuity in the city and not coming in with oranges and blues and greens and yellows and bright colors that, reds, that might not fit in with softer colors.
And actually, it's something that, that we've, we should be paying more attention to, because we are the Architectural Review Committee, and I, I don't know in years if we've actually met on architectural review issues, but that is, you're right, as you drive by certain buildings, they do stand out, and you wanna make sure that we're being wise up front, because if, if the color scheme was other than we wanted, the time to do it was Phase One.
Right, we can't do it later, and if this passes, this color, I accept it, but I think we need to think about it, because it's gonna be there from now on. No changing it, once we decide.
And those, uh, doors on the north ends of the buildings will be facing two hundred and first. So, that being said...
So, did you say this is brick here, this orange?
The orange? Yeah, that's...
What color is that brick?
Nova Brick.
It's gray. Also considered an earth tone.
Yes, I, I'll go with that.
I, I will say...
I'll buy that one.
I understand lakes and sky are, are somehow related, I just, whenever I've heard earth tones, it has more to do with the greens and the browns and...
Tan, tan.
Tans, I've, I've never had, it's creative, the sky and the water, but, but those are typically cooler colors that don't normally fit in the earth tones, but...
I think blue's a beautiful color, I mean, yourself and, and when the people chose to wear a blue night.
This guy is a salesman.
Obviously, you enjoy the color blue, so I don't know why you wanna take away from me.
Well, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I agree that if we wanna choose that for a later discussion, that's fine, but Phase One is done, he's trying to replicate Phase Two and Phase Three to look like Phase One, so it's a consistent storage facility, not, I got a blue one and a brown one and a tan one.
Okay.
So, I would propose if we choose to have a discussion on what we believe is the definition of earth tones is maybe more like across the street versus the sky and the lakes, that's fine, but I don't think you can change it halfway through his phase construction process that he presented a few years ago on, I'm gonna do Phase One, I'm gonna come back and do Phase Two and Three.
Yeah, I, I think it's, you know, it's fair that, that a council member wants to bring it up and we have the discussion.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Planner Stockman?
I would agree with Mr. Alders, um, the only comment I would make is, I mean, you, you can, you do have control at this point about landscaping, and he's got quite a significant amount of landscaping just south of Phases Two and Three here. If you feel like you don't wanna see these buildings from Viking Boulevard, then put more landscaping down there, because these are set farther back.
Yeah, aren't your buildings set farther back right now?
I don't...
The ones you've got there now?
They're set back, and they, these are even...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think I see them.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Could we please have one person speak at a time and let them announce themselves? I know it's the imposition that I got there, but I'd like to be able to understand who is speaking. The last person that gave the big long spiel, I don't know who that was, was Mr. Peterson or Councilmember Alders, because nobody announces themselves.
Well, the, uh, the last male voice that talked was Councilmember Alders, and I, I did recognize him. And when Mr. Peterson talked, I did call on him, but I will try and make that clear in the future. The two female voices were Planner Stockman and, and Councilmember Blake, and we were talking about landscaping between these buildings and Viking, and whether there needs to be any landscaping between these buildings and two hundred and first, but the, the question was, you know, Phase One is, is off of Viking Boulevard, Phase Two and Three are further off of Viking Boulevard than Phase One, and they would have doors that ultimately, between Phase Two and Phase Three, those north doors would face two hundred and first, not Viking. Uh, the south side of Phase Two and Phase Three, the south side of Phase Two is going to be north of Phase One, so I don't know that you'll even see it from Viking. Uh, Phase Three, there's a fair amount of woods that I think are gonna be, uh, there's still landscaping between Phase Three and Viking Boulevard, correct? Yeah?
Yeah. There's existing tree coverage between the brick and the south side of Phase Three also that will pop up.
Yeah, just south of the drainage ditch there?
Correct.
All right, so at this point, the, the applicant would like to continue with the color scheme so that Phase One, Two, and Three all look the same.
That's right.
And, uh, and for the planning and zoning and for the council to consider in the future, to Councilmember Blake's comment that we are making decisions that will last long into the future, we wanna make sure we make the right ones up front. But at this point, the decision's been made on Phase One, and, uh, the request has been made to continue with that color scheme. And there's nothing in the findings that would say otherwise.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Alders presented a good point that you have to have continuity. He started, that way you can't change it and make it stream, it'd look ridiculous. So, yeah.
All right, anything else from the findings? Mr. Peterson, anything else you'd like to say since you're here?
Just a little bit more, but no more surveying.
All right. Well, we've had our discussion ahead of time, we're a lot of order, but do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
All right, and your motion is to approve the conditional use permit to allow the deviation
of a setback? To allow the conditional use permit under Section eleven dash three dash nine dash C dash nine for multiple principal buildings? A variance from the city code, Section eleven dash six dash two dash K? And, um, the existing residents' use on partial B will, will continue as an interim use under Section eleven dash three dash nine dash D dash five until Phase Three commences.
Okay?
I second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Alders and a second by Councilmember Blake. Do we have any other discussions? Seeing and hearing none, I will ask for roll call vote on the motion.
Councilmember Alders?
Approve.
Councilmember Greifer?
Aye.
Mayor Kealan?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, when are you starting?
Uh, a few months, probably, just based on steel, um, and, uh, getting everything fabbed up whatever, so, we're just looking forward to getting the approval to, you know, sign the contract or something like that.
All right, next item. We're going pretty good here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
See ya.
Thanks, Josh.
I guess I've been in.
Thank you. Item four C, ordinance amendments, Planner Stockman?
Uh, yes, my thoughts on ordinance amendments would be to make this landscaping grading escrow, um, a priority, since we're just getting going with building season here, and then the certificate of occupancy, which is number five on page two, would kinda tie into that, where you, um, maintain some escrow, especially if they're getting just a temporary CO, and that's kinda what would happen, I believe, when, until some of these people that are building, um, at certain times of the year and are unable to finish their landscaping, would end up with a temporary CO until such time as they could finish grading and stabilizing soil with sod or seed. So, if it's okay, I'll prioritize that or anything else you see on the list that, uh...
But item number two there.
Item two would be similar, just a little bit different process for commercial industrial versus residential, and, um...
They just don't wanna get stuck if they don't, don't have it done.
Say that again, sorry.
I said, I said, we don't wanna get stuck if, uh, if the grading stormwater ponds aren't completed, but we didn't withhold enough money.
Oh, exactly, right. Now, some cities actually require, um, development agreements for individual developments, similar to what Josh just had approved. And that would be something, you know, Shane and Bob Ruby could talk about if you were interested in that degree of detail. Otherwise, uh, I'll work with Shane on getting something that satisfies him, you know, he would be estimating, uh, like he does for residential subdivisions, what the cost to finish grading would be should the developer or the landowner abandon the project, so he's the one to estimate those costs and what the letter of credit should be, that kinda thing.
So, at this point, for the May meeting, let's talk one, five, and two.
Right, and then one last comment is, I just noticed today, I don't even remember which meeting it was, it might've been planning and zoning where we held off on discussing, um, about the storage facilities? How and when would you like to move that forward?
Well, um, I think the, the discussion was what's going on in other cities and what we, what might we wanna do? I mean, there's, there's a couple of things, there was, one was a moratorium to try and figure out what a long-term plan should be, the other one was, we talked about previously, having an ordinance in the city that, that restricted similar or same businesses from being next to each other, so we didn't end up with seven bars or restaurants or auto dealerships or whatever right in a row. So, I, I think there's two ways to go about it, one was to evaluate what other cities were doing and what they were learning, so we could piggyback on their, uh, research and discussions, and, and then secondarily, if we decide we don't want to restrict the, the number in the city, but we wanna restrict their location so that it divides up, so they don't become a downtown of nothing but warehouses. I think there's two discussions there, I think we need to summarize what other cities have learned, and then decide how we wanna move ahead. Limiting numbers or limiting locations.
Do we have a moratorium on that?
We do not at this point.
Until we have those discussions, so that we don't get, I mean, I, I tend to agree with you, it's like if you go to Rogers, it's nothing but distribution centers in Rogers, and we have several storage units right around this area, it's like, do we want Melvin to be more storage units?
No.
No.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville? Sorry, I didn't call in. That was, that was, that was Councilmember Alders.
That was Councilmember Alders speaking, thank you.
And, and did you catch what he said?
Pretty much.
So, at this point, um, I think, you know, we, we have one other time in our city history that I know we put a moratorium on, um, I think we need to make sure that we have the, uh, legal ducks lined up and get, get the moratorium on, um, 'cause that is a land use issue that will bite us, so do we wanna inquire of the attorney on preparing an ordinance, or preparing the documentation for a moratorium while we study the issue?
Uh, this is Jay, this is Jason, I, I would, I would propose that.
All right, so Congressman Alders agrees, so the council, um, engage the city attorney to get us a moratorium on storage units until we can do the research we just discussed.
Perfect.
And that typically is a year, I recall? And you can extend it six months, one time, I believe.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman?
Just as a side note, um, there really isn't anywhere around this area where it's big enough, I don't believe, to establish another facility unless we were to rezone something, so right now, I mean, you're probably looking at, you know, industrial uses up on forty-seven, and that new subdivision is still moving forward up there, which is good. They're doing the whole eighty acres. Anyway, I don't know if that changes your mind, but it's just a side note.
Well, I think it's something we still wanna make a decision on before, 'cause what happens is developers come in and, and, you know, something like this pops up pretty quick, um, we need to be ahead of the game and say, yep, that's exactly what our plan was, or, uh, no, here's what we want our plan to be going forward, and like I said, it probably makes sense, not just for storage units, but like businesses, so that we, we get some diversity in our downtown areas.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would propose...
Councilmember Alders?
We would also look at, like, what do we want these businesses to look like, I mean, if you look at Duluth, I mean, there's a section in Duluth where the McDonald's and the gas stations are all a log-type building, because that's, must be what they wanted up there, right? We have a egg-blue building at the end of my property, and then we have another section of blue properties, and if that's what we meant as earth tone, we probably, that was not a good operational definition, I mean, I agree with Jeff, across the street is what I view as earth tone.
Yep.
And like what Sundell's put up is a super nice building and tone colors.
Yes.
So, we probably can use that opportunity to further define what our architectural requirements are too, when we look at that.
So, you know, we, we would, uh, it would be important to define, we are the Architectural Review Committee, by the way.
Absolutely, so we, we said yes, or we didn't give the P and Z enough guidance, because earth tone, someone said, well, blue is water, that's earth tone, and, okay, fine.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's again, kinda goes back to my, what comes out of planning and zoning is, can't affect us for a long time, and if the council approves, sometimes they have to back off, say, no, that's not earth tone. And I, I will say this, when, when Grant came to town to build the Bill Suparet, he expected, because of Pine River State Bank with the log building, and he expected to have to do what Holiday does in a lot of their greater Minnesota cities...
Right.
Where they make it look northwards, and he said, I came in here and nobody said anything, so I just put up what I got, and guess what, we got the big Bill's blue sign, and...
Yeah.
And he expected, based on the other cities around us, to have an architectural review and then have some restrictions.
Absolutely.
And we didn't, we just do whatever you want, so, so I think two things, um, define the architectural standards, and then have the Architectural Review Committee actually weigh in on them...
Yes.
Before decisions are made.
I, I think that's a good, a good next step.
Yeah, I agree.
So, one would be to have the, the attorney, uh, work with us on a moratorium on storage, the, the other one would be a project that says, as a city, we define architectural standards, and the Architectural Review Committee gets involved upfront when Planner Stockman knows somebody's actually planning. when Planner Stockman knows somebody's actually planning something. I think, you know, we did a pretty good job because they did a good job over here. You know, we agreed with what they did, but they came up with a really good plan.
It looks, it's a super-nice building.
Certainly Sundell's, you know, I would take all of twenty-two with that. I've talked to him before, I said, so how do we engage more of that? And that means we have to have architectural standards for our commercial buildings. So that would be one that if you want another item on your ordinance is what are the architectural standards? Because we are, you know, I've talked to Sundell's about this because they spend a lot of time out west. When you go into those communities, somebody set up architectural standards that that community has some uniformity to it. And I've been out east where you think it's nothing but metropolises. And you get into parts of Connecticut and the architectural standards are such that even the McDonald's might be.
Yeah, I mean, over at Stillwater, it looks like a Cape Cod area there when you get off of, it should come off thirty-six and into, I don't remember what crossroad it is, but the Holiday, the gas stations, everything looks like a.
Little downtown, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's a priority for us before more development comes in. What do we want our community to look like? So where does that fit in, Liz, on your?
So I see just having a, you know, a more detailed section of your ordinance that gets included for review and approval when these developments come through. And then you have a, not only Planning and Zoning, but council can give you, you know, what Planning and Zoning recommends. So, and then what's sometimes nice to do is to create sort of a packet of graphically showing what you want that you can give out to these property owners or developers.
Good idea.
So I do have some very good examples of that kind of thing.
I would say Waterbury, Connecticut went in and they had a design such that you go into a strip mall and there was a McDonald's, a bank, and a gas station. And you had to look twice to see which one you were going into. I mean, they had done such a nice job in a very industrial area. Nice berm out front and a low-key sign. And it was very appealing. All right, so where does that fit into your, you can pull together a little design packet for us?
I can do that along with these ordinance changes. And then if I might, if I might, kind of what goes along with the architectural standards would be upgrading the types of screening, you know, fencing that we allow. I would completely remove the chain link with the slats and that kind of thing, which just looks, you know, unless we really limit that to, you know, rear yards away from streets, that kind of thing. But one question would be, how detailed or how much are you concerned about architecture with industrial versus commercial? So, you know, the one across the street is a combination where the front, the commercial part, the office part is higher quality, more higher-quality materials than the back. So he still actually met our ordinance, in other words, he got to use part metal, but he chose to focus that on the office part which faces the street, which makes a lot of sense.
I think what we want to be looking at is street-facing. So even in industrial areas where you're street-facing, I think to Jason's point, you go down to Rogers and it's just a lot of distribution centers.
Big boxes.
A lot of tip-up and garage doors.
And there's some, there's some really nice buildings that people have built. I mean, Sundell's built a nice one, he built a nice one over here. I don't remember who just remodeled that really nice-looking building right next to the cabinet shop.
Oh, right, yeah.
I mean, that's a very, very nice building that he's remodeled and added onto there. And then you have that level of building, and then you have a blue lean-to at the end.
Yeah.
So we're, got a lot of variation, right?
Well, you know, there again was accommodation. Somebody had a good idea, wanted to do something, and we just didn't look down the road far enough to say, what is this going to be? What was intended and what ended up ultimately becoming outdoor storage.
Two different things, right.
So that's where we need to, as a council and a planning commission, be more diligent of that. And like I said, I can't, it's been years since the Architectural Review Committee's actually looked at anything. That should have been, even in a commercial or an industrial area, should have been addressed because that doesn't fit anything else. And when we started our commercial part, it was tip-ups. It was A and B welding, that was going to be everything in there. And then it was too restrictive because nobody wanted to buy and have to tip up. And so we started going to pole structures. And it changed without really understanding what we were changing. And the people that put the money into something like A and B did, it was frustrating for them to say, we required that and then nobody else was. There's some nice structures there and there's some things that I think North Valley had the same thing. So you will pull together a packet for the May meeting, Architectural Design Packet. You will make sure that as designs start coming up, you call the Architectural Review Committee together so that we can discuss.
Maybe something, pardon me, Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Maybe something to do too would be when you get a concept or a draft of somebody's exterior building elevations, we almost send that, you know, by itself for discussion ahead of the rest of the whole, you know, plan.
I agree. All right, so we're going to get Architectural Design Packet, process for alerting the Architectural Review Committee ahead of time, and then items one, five, and two on the ordinance amendment. Council agree?
Yes.
Agreed.
Agreed. Consider yourself directed, Planner Stockman.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Well, actually, we're halfway there. Purchases of capital equipment, Mack Truck, continue. I will say, there's legislation that's before House and Senate right now that would exempt cities and counties from paying taxes on purchases like this. I checked on the legislation today and the chairs of the Transportation Committee are not excited about it because even though there's a $3 billion surplus or multi-billion dollar surplus, they're concerned that if we don't charge, if they don't charge taxes on counties and cities, their revenue will be reduced. That being said, I'm reading that as it may not pass this year. It did not get into the omnibus bill. So if the transportation chairs can kill it, they may kill it this year. The league has been working on that for quite some time. Right now, if you're a township, we would pay no taxes. But cities and counties are paying taxes. Quarter million dollars, that's sixteen thousand dollars in tax. So that would have to be added to our numbers here. Like I said, if there's an outside chance that it would get through this year, then we would save that in taxes, but I'm not going to hold my breath if the transportation chairs are going to fight. There are a number of questions that went out on the truck. I'm still a little bit confused as to how Toolmaster came up with the different numbers and how we got confused there, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Kind of a curveball. I was supposed to have my annual cemetery meeting tonight, and I thought it would be a quick night, but it's not developing to be such. Is there any of these that we could vote on that might be quick? That I could weigh in on? The crack seal plan, the gravel and dust plan, seasonal driver for the summer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Facebook page.
We can push off on that right now.
Animal control contract. I think a bunch of these we could vote through without much ado by eight-thirty.
Let's go for it. Did you catch that, Councilmember Rainville?
Yes, I did, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so let's jump down to B, crack seal plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move out with the passage of resolution approving the 2021 crack seal, Revolution 2021 dash eleven.
Second.
All right, I have a comment, though. At our last meeting, we talked about adding Krypton, one-hundred-and-eighty-third, one-hundred-and-eighty-fourth, Merle's Lane, one-hundred-and-eighty-ninth, and one-hundred-and-ninety. Did we add those in Illinois?
It was related to Public Works Supervisor Joe Williams, and he will be adding those on to the crack seal plan, but I don't have updated numbers on that right now.
So, Councilmember Greenberg, did you move that?
Second.
Mary did? So Mary, would you amend it to include those roads that we resurfaced or redid last year? Engineer said those should always be crack sealed the first year after they're done because we do expect cracks over the winter and they should be sealed right away. So you'll amend your motion accordingly?
I would amend it and we also include the roads that were included in our road project for 2020.
Okay, and the second agrees with that?
I agree.
All right. With that said, roll call, please.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Mayor Pilon?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Motion carries. Gravel and dust control plan for 2021. We have fifty-eight thousand linear feet, eleven miles, and a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move out the approved resolution, 2021 dash twelve. This is approving the 2021 for both gravel and dust control plan.
I second it.
All right, so my own again for the motion here on the gravel plan on the back of 2021 dash twelve is a different plan than we were given today. Fifty-eight thousand, fifty-eight thousand linear feet, eleven miles versus twenty-two thousand feet. So if in your motion you would include the latest dust control plan, Verde Valley, Xenon, Basalt, two-hundred-and-fifth, Sealite, Verilite, Post Road, West Ford, Burke, one-hundred-and-ninety-first, two-hundred-and-fourth, and Catryum, as opposed to the one on the back of the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I quick, I understand what you said.
Okay. On the back of the resolution, there are four roads listed. On the latest dust control plan that we received, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve roads listed.
The four roads are for the gravel plan. The other roads are for the dust control plan.
Okay.
Yeah, it says right on here.
My mistake. Because I was looking at the comment on the bottom about the dust control, so I mixed the two up. So they're going to be doing gravel on those four, dust control on the twelve. And the motion is to approve it with Northern Salt as the bidder, the winning bid. Is that correct? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, roll call.
Mayor Pilon?
Aye.
Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Motion carries. The.
RCA.
RCA for part-time seasonal help. So you're talking two people, the one in the parks and recycling, the equivalent of what?
Mayor, council, that's correct. I would be asking for, we typically hire somebody to take care of the hoeing of the parks, weed-whipping, weed-pulling, and then helping out in the recycle center. And that would be at sixteen dollars an hour and not to exceed thirty-two hours per week. And then we also have a position for gravel hauling, which we would like to ask Dave Pond to come back. He's done it for us, he did it last summer for us and would like to come back again this summer at seventeen dollars an hour, not to exceed thirty-two hours a week.
And that worked pretty well last year at those hours?
Yes.
All right, it's up to motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Can I, did I hear Laurie says as a person for the parking rack and the recycle center, is that seventeen or fifteen an hour?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, one-six.
One-six, okay, thank you.
And the gravel position is one-seven.
One-seven, all right, thank you very much.
All right, Councilmember Blake, you about to make a motion?
I motion that we accept the request for seasonal park, recycle center, maintenance worker, and truck driver, the positions that are stated in this request.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Mayor Pilon?
Aye.
Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Not even close.
All right. We're trying to do the quick ones, the RCA for Saturday hours and the recycle center, did we want to address that?
If you want to do the recommendations first, right?
Would you like to have maybe a presentation on that one before we discuss that?
Well, that's up to Joel.
But there's a couple more quick ones under number seven that Joel could help with.
All right, so let's go to Facebook. And the RCA right now on Facebook has put that on hold for the moment.
Mayor, council, I believe that would be the best idea since I do want to make sure that we devote the correct amount of time on that and with training and building permits picking up in the office and just the busyness right now, it's spring and hiring. I think that it would be best to put that up for a little bit.
All right, council, have a concern there or not?
No.
All right, it is put off for the time being. North Metro Animal Control. Whose questions are these in the red and blue?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Those were my questions to Laurie when the initial proposal was provided to us.
So right now, it's a two-year contract, everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
The private, what's our one commercial kennel? Liz.
Pardon me, the commercial kennel is Julie Gertie's.
Julie. And so right now, you're saying that the commercial would still be you? Is the way this is proposed.
That's what I'm recommending.
Proposed here.
Planner Stockman would still do that inspection.
And if there were a private kennel, six to 10 dogs, then North Metro would do it?
Correct, and we don't have any in the city at this time that we're aware of.
All right, okay with you?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Planner's document agrees. Next item was the $500 registration fee for dangerous dog addendum. Take advantage of this option. Anything else on the questions from Councilmember Rainville? All right. So the correction would be on North Metro license inspection, would not be for commercial, but would be for private. That would be corrected. Dangerous dog registration addendum would be added, and it'd go from one year to two The advantage of two years?
No, there's no price advantage. I just thought it was, we, I have not heard any complaints at all about their contract and their services, and rather than redoing it again next year, we just take advantage of the two-year contract.
All right, any other questions that the council has at this point? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to address resolution 2021 dash 07 as amended on the inspection of commercial kennels.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution 2021 dash 07 as amended with the Planner's Sockman agreeing to follow up on commercial kennels versus private kennels.
All right, Councilmember Alders makes motion, we have a second.
Second.
Councilmember Greenberg, seconds, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please roll call, Lori.
Councilmember Greaver?
Aye.
Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Mayor Pilon?
Recycle day paper shredder. We need a recycle shredder, recycle day shredder.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Just a mixed thing up here, so I, if I, I am more than happy to address the two RCA that I put in at this time.
Okay, let's wait, let's wait until Lori gives her presentation. Joel needs to get going, so the other one would be the P&amp;Z interview.
And are we going to talk about the Mack truck, or are we just going to table it?
We need to, we need to vote on it, I think, tonight.
I do, too.
So, interview, we have four good candidates, we've interviewed. The request is to wait until May to complete the interviews for one more person if they're up to it by then, and then make a decision in May. I don't know what that does to the candidates we have. I know last week, we were very anxious to get this process moving forward because people have been waiting for a while. I don't know what the prospects are, long-term, short-term, for Troy. What does the council prefer to do? It does push us out another month, pushes out training, and hopefully would be acceptable to candidates that are in waiting right now, so. Do we move ahead with what we've got, and encourage Troy to look at the next opening? Do we wait a month and hope that we hang on to the candidates we've already interviewed? And then, like I say, puts our training and our adding to the commission out another month. What would the, what would the council prefer?
I, Mr. Mayor, this is Linda speaking.
Councilmember Blake.
I think he had no, Troy had no control over what happened to him, it was an accident, and I just feel like he should have the opportunity to be interviewed. I mean, if he, if he didn't come because he just didn't feel like coming, I would feel indifferently, but this is something beyond his control, and I think those candidates are going to be sympathetic to the fact that this man was in a car accident.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I think he, he gave us an indication he still wanted to interview, didn't he?
Absolutely.
So I'm in favor of him interviewing. I got to go do a cemetery.
See you later, man.
Get that cemetery in line, will you, please? Dennis and I might join that place. I want it looking really good.
Waylon Headstones. All right, Mary?
Well, I'll be the spoiler. I think we should move forward, we have four good candidates for three openings. There's been an opening on P&amp;Z since January of 2020, when Kristen Moyn submitted her reservation, and there was an opportunity for everybody to apply for that, none of these candidates did, so I would like to move forward with it. I know I didn't feel bad before in the accident, but the emails that we got last week were, we got to do this, we got to do this, so let's do it.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
What we had to do was interview, because these people were waiting to be interviewed. But I think out of compassion, this, this young man had an accident, and I think anyone in that group would be sympathetic to the fact that there's one more person who wants to interview, and he...
Yeah, we have, we have to interview him. He applied in January, he's been patiently waiting.
Okay, can people please be announced, instead of just cutting in when somebody's speaking?
Councilmember Alders.
That was Blake.
So, Mary, this is Jason, we have to interview him. He's been waiting since January. He got in a car accident the day of the interviews, and I don't agree that we've been, had openings since January of 2020 that weren't filled because we never posted for him. So I agree that it's going to take a few more weeks. I'm pretty sure he was willing to interview the first week of May or the May 11 date that we threw out there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
This is Blake. Is there a possibility he might be willing to come, maybe by the end of the month, he'd be feeling good enough so that we could interview him, I mean, one time for an hour, like maybe the 28th or, you know what I'm saying?
Mayor Council, I'd be happy to reach out to him and ask him. I know that he is willing to interview at his earliest possible time, and he's still very interested in the interview.
Okay, maybe that would speed it up.
I'm out next week.
Maybe a suggestion is...
You're gone next week?
To, you could offer, if you would like to meet and discuss the candidates that you have now, you could make an offer to one or two of them and then wait on the third position until you know you've gone through.
I would, I would like to do it all five and pick the three.
That looks better.
Yeah, can we announce ourselves, please?
So Lori had said maybe picking two now and then waiting for the third one until we interviewed. Jason said, no, we need to interview all five and make a decision at one time, and Councilmember Blake agreed.
Okay, so she...
All right, so at this point, the, Joel had to leave, but he said before he left, he would like to give Troy the opportunity to interview. Councilmember Alders, Councilmember Blake also said that, Councilmember Rainville said, let's get moving forward like we said last week. So right now, we're at 3-2-1, and I will say that, you know, if Troy gets healthy enough, we can interview. I, I don't want to delay this any longer than we have to. I agree that we, I'm trying to get this moving forward, I'd like to see it going forward, but at this point, as soon as Troy is healthy enough, we get moving forward and hope that this doesn't lose any of our candidates. After our meeting last week, Lori, did anybody get, did you send anything to the candidates that interviewed as to what the next steps were or thanking them for coming in?
When I walked them out, I spoke to each of them and told them that I would be in touch within the next week or two, so I can call all of them and let them know where we're at in the process.
Okay.
That's good.
Perfect.
So at this point, the council would prefer to, to interview all candidates at this So we need to find out when that is, and Lori will contact the candidates and thank them for their patience and tell them we will let them know within the month, hopefully.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
And I know, you know, people are going to, this will go far and wide, and I'm not, not sympathetic to Troy's life, life right now, but again, that position was open, anybody could have, applied for it, it doesn't have to be advertised, so anybody could have applied for that, and the sentiment last week was we need to get moving on it, so I'm just going on the sentiment last week.
Mary, this is Jason, so just back up on those statements.
So, have you been?
Councilmember Alders.
So when Troy applied in January, we told him he couldn't apply because it wasn't posted. So now you just said that he could have, someone could have applied even if it wasn't posted, so you can't have it both ways.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I don't believe we ever told you that can't apply because it wasn't posted.
Yes, we did.
We're trying to do one of those.
Yes, we did, Mary.
We did.
Hang on, one person talking to the table. Councilmember Rainville, you got the floor. Councilmember Rainville, you got the floor.
I'm done, I'm done.
We specifically did tell him he had to wait because it wasn't posted.
I, I will disagree, but it could be proven wrong. I don't think it was because it wasn't posted, it's because we didn't have the process done.
Okay.
Which is, which was different, we were waiting to post till we had a process. I do think that, that he applied before there was a posted opening, which to Councilmember Rainville's position, could have happened anytime during the year, but if we had decided we're going to look at the process, it wouldn't have made a difference. That being said, the council has agreed to wait till Troy is physically able, and then we'll conduct the interviews. So let's go through the RCAs here. Lori, you want to do your presentation? Is that what this is here for? Mayor, you're going to have to squint real hard, I'm holding my phone here so you can see.
Well, it's the same presentation that's in the...
It's in the packet.
In the packet. So I don't know if you want to put it on the screen?
Oh.
Well, now that you went through all that work, why not?
I would, I'd like to see it. Is that baby on? It looks like it's on.
There's no light coming out of it.
I don't hear it. I'm sure it's not.
Looked like a light was in there.
Here's a fan, so. Yep, there it comes.
Should we turn the lights off and have it like a real movie?
I should have made popcorn, I wish I would have thought I had.
I love movie theater.
Oh, it's our packet.
You want to tip, I think, the black piece that you had on top? That will, will that rotate it?
No, it's cranking.
That's, is it just cranking? That's good. Yep.
Yep. Okay, well, Mayor and Council, I put together a little packet of, just a little bit of history and what my recommendations are for the recycling center based off of what I've seen since I've been here. I wanted to give you a little bit of background information on the recycling center. I'm going to take my mask. In 1987, Anoka County began to encourage municipalities to set up recycling programs that would meet the abatement goals of the county. The county not only provided increased funds, but required municipalities to joint, to sign joint powers agreements and develop formal plans. The county authorized a staff position to provide technical assistance. The solid waste abatement advisory task force was established to share information and encouragement with all 21 municipalities and was facilitated by Commissioner Paul McCarron. Program growth increased dramatically in 1988. Eight new drop-off centers opened and five curbside programs were implemented. In 1989, the SCORE bill mandated many changes in county recycling programs. Municipalities with populations of 5,000 or more are mandated to have curbside collection of recyclables, a 35% abatement of waste by December 31, 1993, household hazardous waste programs by June 30 of 1992, and government institutional recycling of at least three broad types of recyclable materials. June 30, I'm sorry. The SCORE bill also created a 6% tax on garbage service with Anoka County, which passed through to the municipalities to help offset the cost of the mandated programs. Anoka County's recycling programs continued to grow. Three additional drop-off centers opened and four more cities began curbside services. And as you can see on the graph, we became a part of this in 1989. So our current Now Then Center is, the situation there is that during COVID, we reduced the hours down to Tuesdays and Thursdays, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to noon, but we do not have any county assistance. So our current staff is having to go over and clean up the center and staff it when they can. We currently accept at no charge scrap metal, glass, cardboard, cardboard, oil. We do have appliances and mattresses, bulbs, tires, and electronics that we charge a fee.
Lori, just real quick there, has the county said any indication when they might participate again?
No, we have been in touch with the county off and on, asking status updates, and they're not able to give us any dates at all at this time, and it's, I don't want to speak for them, but it doesn't sound like we will see anything anytime soon.
I know, American County is going back to adjudicated individuals working.
We have not heard that yet, so. So the profit and loss, we have continued to show, we've been in the, in the black and we've not been in the red, but we, it continues to bring in revenue for items that the people recycle. The haulers pay for the cardboard and scrap metal, we do get money back for that, and Anoka County provides SCORE money up to $30,257 annually based on the SCORE report. So we're having to, the SCORE report is a project inside the office that we take on, we take all of the receipts and the, the information on what we've paid the haulers and what we've brought in from the residents, and then we provide that to the county in order to receive that SCORE amount, the SCORE money. And then we provide that to the county in order to receive that SCORE amount, the SCORE money. And we also have the additional grants, up to $20,000, that we can apply for.
Have we applied for that?
Mm-hmm.
And have we got the money?
Yeah. We use that money to install the surveillance cameras and we've bought my sweeper. We've done, bought a few things with the money over the years.
Could we apply this year for that?
Pardon me?
Could we apply this year?
We haven't turned the SCORE report in yet for this year.
You expect we'll get the 20 around this year?
Well, depending on what we ask for it. So we have to give them a reason for why we're asking for the additional money. So that, at the end of the presentation, I'll show you some ideas I was thinking.
Okay.
So the profit and loss, this is just a page showing our profits and losses. The goal isn't to have a large profit, but just to be able to cover our expenses and then make some improvements on the recycle center at the same time. So 2020 doesn't look as great, and that's just because of the two recycle days we had that were free for the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So to this strike, in 2020, we did have the two recycle days, but did we not get COVID funds to cover the cost of some of that?
We did use.
Of that, we're what did in the, did you get $100?
We did use COVID money for some of that loss, but I don't, we still, our gain was only $4.25 for the recycle center in 2020. So.
Never mind.
Well, we, the other one in 2020 was the cameras. Because, because I remember we were thinking we're gonna take a big hit on the recycling, the free recycling day, and we got, you know, the tires taken and the appliances taken. We got all that stuff that we got taken for free. But the big hit was the electronics. And I thought, and that's where the COVID money came in to cover the electronics.
The cameras were, we used the SCORE enhancement money for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I am not here.
You said on the cameras, we use the SCORE enhancement funds for the cameras.
So does the $63,000 cover the cost of the cameras? Is that part of the expenditures?
Yes, that was part of the expenditures of the recycling fund.
Okay.
So the current issues we're having with the recycle center right now, well, when it's open and unsupervised, there's full access to the recycle center. It's a very large building. Doors are left propped open. So even if the, the doors are on a timer right now, if somebody goes in and they prop the door open, many times they don't, we can have signage up asking them to close the doors and they don't do that, which then leaves the doors open for all access all night.
Oh, dear.
We've had people sleep in there. We've had people use it as a bathroom. We have unexpected items and sometimes hazardous material left there. It requires a lot of staff time for cleanup. We've had people go in and rummage through and looking through papers and cardboard for addresses and just taking scrap metal and things that they would like to keep on, you know, from the recycle center. The next page shows some pictures of some of the dumping that's happened inside the recycle center because it's unsupervised. And this requires a lot of staff time. So some recommendations that I have for the recycle center would be to, whoops, to limit access to the interior of the building and only allow access inside when there is an employee working there. Redesign the signage with nice signs that look the same. They, we've got a lot of different colored signs out there, green signs and red signs and brown signs, but get some nice professional signs made. And I like the idea of exterior drop boxes, like in the next picture that a neighboring city has, where any free items get put into the drop boxes. So those can be open all hours of the day and night and make them just large enough to throw in their cans or their recyclables. And then there's also, they have a gated area for their oil that they can drop their oil off at all times, but there's no access inside the buildings unless an employee is working there. And there's a, on the very right on my diagram here, my pictures, there's a booth there that has, where a cashier could be. So if we were to have, have staff working over there when it is open, when they're accepting appliances, the staff member can be taking the money right at that window. My thought is to have it open for free recycling. The doors would stay closed, but the outside windows would be open at all times. They can drop things off at all times, but then have it staffed one Saturday a month. And that's where somebody would be in the supervisor station and taking payment for the recycling items that need payment.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So to this strike, so I guess I, that's quite sincere. Your first, not the third bullet point, have exterior drop boxes for free items, but it's, I don't see exterior, you just mean the, the opening for them to put something into, or do you mean an outdoor box outside?
No. You just, you mean these whole, the.
Yeah, I mean the.
Windowless windows.
So Councilmember Rainville, on, on the last page of the presentation, it shows a neighboring recycling center and they have windows with signage showing what items would go into those boxes. And then there would be a bin inside the recycle center. But they would have no reason to have to go inside the building. The building would stay secured at all times.
And we.
So this stuff, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mary.
So it's not really an exterior drop box. It's a exterior window that you drop your products into the bill.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So that will, that, that will cover cans, plastics, glass. So what, and so then you're saying that Saturday, one month, one Saturday a month, for applying tires? What, so people don't have cars, when are they dropping cardboard off? Or they have scrap metal, when are they able to drop that off?
Well, Marion Councilmember Rainville, what I'm, that is something that I would like to discuss. I don't know if there's a window ability to, if there's something out there that we could look at for cardboard. The nice thing that about putting it through a larger window would be that they have to crush it down, which takes a lot of time. So then there's not a bunch of boxes. Or we could do like Andover does and bring in, they have dumpsters for cardboard and they flatten them and put them in the dumpsters that way. And that could be outside. And same with scrap metal. I'm not sure, scrap metal and cardboard were my only concerns on how we could make this work because those are free items and I don't know that we wanna ask people to wait until Saturdays to drop those off.
We did have, we did have windows previously. When we first set that up, we had this, very, you probably can still see the cutouts that we patched. One of the problems is plastics. Obviously, people drop off plastics that aren't recyclable. But if you take a look, the two huge cages that we have for plastics and available, what we found is, one, just because you label them properly outside, people still just, we started to sort it once they got inside. There's some reason people, they might put plastics in the plastic, but they put it in the brown bottles.
And that's happening now, too.
The, the problem, one of the problems is the volume of plastics. These windows necessarily have to be low enough that most people can get to them, which limits the capacity of the container on the other side. Plastic couldn't keep up. Obviously, the cardboard, the volumes we have and the sizes we have wouldn't fit through a window. Newspapers, if you had a staircase outside and a high window, you could maybe do that. But your dumpster's so long, you'd be filled in front of the dumpster and back. And then obviously, the situation with the paid items, the appliances, the tires, the light bulbs, those types of things. If we only had that available one Saturday a month, I think we'd go back to having a problem. Right now, they can go to the city office, pay and drop off three days a week, as opposed to the one day a month when it's open. So we'd be limited from three days a week, which is at least 12 times a month, to one time a month. That might be kind of productive.
So, Marion Council, one thing about the, to address your first question with the bins, there would be less time inside the recycle center cleaning up garbage and things like that, where the staff could go over and several days a week, twice a week or maybe three times a week, go and get the bins cleaned out so that they can, or push things back so that the window would allow the accumulation of the other plastics and the glass and, but they're not cleaning up junk and garbage and things that don't belong in there and organizing. And then the question about the, I already forgot what the other question was.
Newspaper was one.
Yeah, newspaper, same thing. They could go in there and, and a couple times a week, check on the status of the bins and make sure that they're allowing more to come in.
And with this setup, you would say that it's gotta fit through the window? So you would, that would force people to like break down the boxes or cut them into manageable sizes?
Yeah, and that's something I do wanna check into with an idea for, I was thinking a window for the cardboard, and I don't know that that's feasible because I do see, they might have to break down the cardboard and then they can put it in there, but maybe a longer slat type of a window for the cardboard.
If it gets too big, I'd have to have people just crawl through it. I mean, if you, if you've gone up there tonight and see the people that are rummaging through the electronics, they have no qualms about crawling through the cardboard.
You're saying it'd be like a mail slot?
Yeah, like a larger though, but not enough for somebody to fit their head through, I would hope. But it wouldn't surprise me. They have come across some people in there that are rummaging through mail and, and scrap metal.
Yeah, it's eerie. You walk in, you go in there in the dumpster, you hear some of these dumpsters, it's like, okay, what is that animal? And there'll be somebody down in the bottom, scrap metal or somebody. The popular one is the newspapers and magazines because they are looking for mail, they're looking for addresses.
You're kidding. I was just naive.
Don't ever go up there at night and you see the lights on and the door props over there. It's interesting individuals.
I don't understand. Can't someone go and make sure the doors shut at night? I mean, have we got?
We used to do that. The council rotated every week and we would just go up at closing time and lock it.
What's the closing time?
Seven.
Well, why can't we, what time is Joe down every night?
3:30.
Oh, we'll learn, I guess.
People propping open so the door stays open when they're unloading their truck.
That's what's been happening, is the doors are being propped open anyways. So it's, it's really open all week long unless somebody sees the doors open.
What Dan, Brian and I were doing is we're rotating, I think Joe might have been in there for a while, but we'd go up every night to check for prop doors.
At 7 o'clock?
Well, sometime typically it's closer to 8. That's when you run into people, it's like, okay, we're closed. It's like, don't get between them and the door. There's some interesting people on there. But again, that's one of the things the council is doing is because the doors were propped open, we go up and make sure they're shut. Once they're shut, at least they're locked. But that's also why we have to keep paying for the locksmith to come in because when they prop them open, they bend them so far open, they don't shut anymore. And that gets expensive.
Well, and I understand that you may not like the idea of closing it for the paid recyclables until, you know, that they have to have a dedicated day to drop those off. But with the vandalism, the destruction that they're doing inside the recycling center, it only takes a few that ruin it for everybody. And I think that others would probably understand that, and they would get used to, once a month is, I can drop off all my appliances on that day, once a month. And I think people would get used to it. And especially if they can drop off their free items in advance and put them through at any time they want to. So we're opening it up to the free items anytime. It's just the paid items would be once a month and it would be staffed. So there wouldn't be anybody wandering around inside that big building and rummaging through barrels and dumpsters.
Should we afford, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Should we afford twice a month or, I mean, once a month seems a little.
That would be council's decision. My plan is that I would have the person that we hire for the Parks and Recycle Center would just know that their hours would include a Saturday a month or two Saturdays a month.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To this strike. I, I, the complaint I get in that department, I got, was, was that we're not open enough. And I think if we go down to one day a week or one day a month, that you can come in and bring your appliances and your tires and all that, we're gonna find them stacked out in front of the recycle center the rest of the month. I, I just don't see that as being customer friendly. I, I don't see that as something that the residents are going to accept. They don't like the fact that we are only open a limited hour. I appreciate this power point, there's a lot of good things in there. But when residents contact me, they, they want more hours than that left. So I don't think we need to truly sit and look at what would it cost us to staff. Now, we can't staff at 10 hours a day. But what would, what would a reasonable number of hours be? And what would it cost us to staff? And back to the beginning is that if it's staffed, like you're saying, if it's staffed, people are less likely to drop things that they shouldn't be or get into things they shouldn't get into, damage things that they shouldn't be damaging. So there would be less, the city I would think would have less expense. If you have. Yeah, ten refrigerators dropped, but only two of them are paid because the other eight, nobody was around and I dropped them. If somebody was there, hopefully we can get paid for 10. So that would help. Eliminate some of the expense in that, you know, we have employee expense, but we have less, we, we're bringing in more revenue for the items that are being brought in. You had mentioned, I think it was a dumpster, an outside dumpster. My store was an outside dumpster that's not locked. Everybody just puts their garbage, because that's what they do already. When we used to have the dumpsters out, I mean, they'd cut the locks, the chain gets to drop their garbage. So I, I don't, the thought of having an open dumpster, unlocked dumpster, to me is a magnet for people dropping stuff.
I think what you were talking about was, did you mention dumpster or were you talking about the oil?
I was talking about the oil, to have an outside oil area.
So right now, there's, in the picture on the last page there was, the concern there is they've got barrels, we've got the big Eastside tank. You'd almost have to have a lean tool at the top because everything would just run into the.
Yeah, Eastside has a very nice, they have the, the same setup as us, only it's outside and then they have a roof over it. And I think it's provided by Eastside Oil for outside.
And that's the thing, if, if Eastside would provide. And that's the thing, if Eastside would provide, uh, cover for it, get it from going inside. Councilmember Alders?
Is there, is there an opportunity to do a bit of a hybrid here, Lori? I mean, if I remember going into that building, could we not just put a wall up between where the majority of the free recyclables are and put the windows in? And then leave the other side open? Because the other side is where the big dumpsters are for the steel and the tires and the appliances. Because I mean, when I look at the mess that people make, it's the plastics and the cardboard and the paper and the glass, it's a bit of a, more of a problem. So, we potentially could do a hybrid model where we put a wall up inside of there, block off half of it, you know, we could figure out, how do we do the oil? Do we put it on the other side so it could be done all the time? Or maybe it's in, maybe Eastside does an outside unit or something for the oil, so people can drop that off at any point. But then you put these windows up on that side of the building, so people can dump the recyclables anytime, but they can't get into the building to like destroy it. And then they can get into the other half to do the steel and the appliances. Because we don't have a great plan for this, for recycling steel anyway right now. And maybe that's a fair compromise for your team, so they're not over there sweeping up bathroom stuff and people throwing stuff, just opening the door and whipping it in there and leaving, right?
Well, that's a great idea, but they're going to just go in the door that's open and do it over there. If there's any access into the building, that's where they're going to dump the things they're not supposed to be dumping as well.
You don't think they would dump the paper where they're supposed to? You think they'd open the door and just whip it in there?
I don't know about paper, but if, some of, in this picture, I don't know if you can see, that there's toys and there's things that we don't accept.
Yeah.
And they, they just throw it inside the building. And with our surveillance system, we have not had a lot of outdoor dumping, but I would like to make our signage more clean. There's just too many signs and too much information. But if we have nice, clean signage and they have not been leaving as much outside, because on the, one of our signs, it does say that it's under surveillance and we will be sending a citation. And so we haven't really had a lot of outdoor dumping.
Few of them are doing it and figured out where the cameras are.
Right.
And will see, those appliances on the west end of the building.
But it's so much better than it was.
Well, I, I think a big part of that too is, because we got that last year when we weren't open. And now at least there's three days a week where they can come in. That was part of the frustration when we put up the cameras, is they were flipping off the cameras, because you're locked and you can't...
When we weren't open, we had hardly anything left outside. There was very minimal.
I, I think what we showed when, especially when Dan and Joel were working on a regular basis, because I'm going up there and helping out, it's the, they were very good about saying, "We can't take that plastic, or we can't take that cardboard," I mean, the wet packs and stuff like that. They were good about, "That, you have to take that home with you." "This, you have to go over and pay for it and put a sticker on it." And so we minimized, when it's staffed, nobody's dumping junk and everybody's paying. Now, is there a reasonable price to pay a part-time or maybe a retired person to come and staff it? Evenings, you know, we have to see, I don't know. Whenever during the day, people do drop off during the day, but most people are working and are going to do it later on. If we had regular hours, three days a week, or four days a week, it said, "You can come in these days, and it's staffed, and you have somebody paying." We had one time talked about, you know, this office that you've got here. We talked about, between the two doors there, actually put sheet metal on it and had an area there that somebody could collect the money to, and have a place to have a small office. But then the idea was, like Dan and Joel did, um, when you're staffing there, you're bailing cardboard, you're bailing plastics, and you're making sure that people are putting, for the most part, tin with tin, aluminum with aluminum, brown with brown, um, so there was much less work to do. And when people came in and saw what the process was for bailing, people tend to be a little cooperative too. They weren't just dumping it by the door and running. So I think that the real key is, if we want to do something for the free stuff that we can, with the windows, the compromise might be putting windows back in for as much of the free stuff as we can and then have a part-time or staff it, so that we keep up with the bailing and the cleanup and we avoid the mess, we avoid the junk that shouldn't be there, and we avoid the things being dropped off without being paid. And I think that if we do that, we can probably, well, realistically, we'd cut back on Joe and Eric, the higher paid people going over there having to do it, until the county comes back and can give us some aid. We have somebody on a part-time basis, like our summer haul feeder, that comes in and says, "Okay, four days a week is what I'm going to do." That way we can post regular hours, people know they can come up. And the nice thing about it is they don't have to go over to the office when it's open, they can pay right there.
So this would be an additional part-time employee though, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because...
Not, not the parks person.
The parks person wouldn't have enough time to do both, because they're very busy at the parks, mowing and...
No, I'm saying this is somebody who would do the equivalent of what Dan and Phil were volunteering to do last year. But would be separate from, because last year, with Parks Department, just keeping up with the mowing and re-licking and things like that, yeah, maybe a year it's going to be worse. But last year, keeping up with that, we didn't get any other extra projects done until we hired an additional person. I would say, to me, we have, we decide on hours, what cost-effective and what the hours should be, and we staff it. It's only open when it's staffed. And then you avoid these problems and you get the revenue. And then maybe as part of our grant, to upgrade our building, we put a small office on the front.
Because you're almost, if you're going to staff it full-time, I mean...
You have to have a place to...
You need some heat.
You need some heat, you need some, need some place you can...
For the money, yeah, to, yeah.
There's someplace the public gets it allowed into.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
I, I know I've asked this before, but when, most of, it seems like when I drive around, but a lot of them now then have the recycling bins in their home. You know, you've got your garbage and then you've got your recycling bin. So I'm wondering, how many residents are, I mean, I realize they're there to bring metal and tires and stuff like that, but the cardboard and the plastic and that goes in the recycling bin, and most of us, I bet you most residents have that. At least on garbage day, when I drive down my road, all those recycling bins are out.
And, and our thought way back when, when the haulers started bringing out those cans, we figured this was going to drop tremendously. And, and we do know that some of the larger volumes of cardboard are coming from commercial users.
Right.
But it is amazing to me how many residents, even though they've got the can, and as you say, the tires, the appliances, the metal, the bigger cardboard.
Yeah.
They don't want to break it up and put it in the can. So it is used extensively by now live residents, and I'm certain that there are residents from elsewhere. But again, if we're getting paid for it, and if our, you know, paper and cardboard fluctuates, everything fluctuates. But if we're at least breaking even on hauling costs, so we're not losing money on hauling costs, and potentially when it markets up, you can actually make money on some of this crap. You could, you should be able to break even more better. I mean, if we truly were getting paid for all the tires and all the appliances, I think we'd do pretty well.
But I believe we do have to accept from other cities, because we are funded, supported by Anoka County. We're countywide, we're...
To move this thing forward here, because it's getting to be late. So we're going to ask Lori to do an RCA for an additional person with four hours, three or four days a week.
I think Saturday's going to be important.
So...
How many Saturdays a week would you recommend? One, two, probably two?
Two.
The only, the only problem with two is keeping them straight. You have a fifth Saturday in there and...
Here, well, then do the one.
Well, what is it open now, every Saturday, nine to 12?
Yeah. I, I'd say if you're going to hire a part-timer, just say, it's a Saturday, one of your days a week is Saturday.
Wow.
Again, if you're part-time and that's what you're looking for. I mean, we can at least, we can at least try that and see if we can find a candidate for that.
And you're going nine to noon or nine to five?
Well, that's, that's the next discussion.
Well, if you're open every Saturday, nine to noon should be plenty. Every Saturday? Now, if you were open just one Saturday, I'd say nine to five.
I, you know, I, I would probably go 10 to 2, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raydell.
Um, again, the conversations that I've had with residents, they want more hours on Saturdays. And to limit it to one or two is, uh, to me is not acceptable. Uh, you know, I, maybe we think about, you know, we have a shift for a part-time person that's Tuesday through Saturday, and then Monday's off. But I don't, I don't want to cut back on what, the, how often the center is open on Saturdays for residents. Our residents work, they work, um, not typically in town, and so they are limited to days, you know, weekday hours as to when they can get to the recycling center. And, um, they've been asking for additional hours on Saturdays.
And I wish that they would call the office, because we haven't heard any of these conversations at all.
So what are we proposing? So Tuesday through Friday, what would we think the hours would be? Is it four to six or four to seven?
Councilmember Raydell, you got any comment on that?
I, I'd have to put pen to paper to figure it out.
Mayor?
Do you want, there, there, we have, we have retired people that, the first thing they do in the morning is they, they come, they drop their recycling, and then they go about their day. Uh, we have the people that work, and they need the evening and weekend.
Councilmember Blake.
Okay, Mary, I mean, you can't accommodate everybody who's got a little limo when they want to do something. I mean, yeah, I'd rather do it at a certain time too, but if I know that the recycling center is open, Saturdays, two to four, or whatever, or two to, what did you say, 10 to 2, and that every evening it's open from 4 to 7, when I want to get something up there, I know the hours that I can go, that's a lot of hours to make choices of when you want to bring something. And if you're older, you can go until Saturday and bring it in the morning, if you want to do a morning run. I mean, nobody gets that much recycling that they have to go every day.
Uh, to, to Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raydell.
And, and I'm not saying people go every day, Councilmember Blake.
Okay.
I'm just, we need to consider our residents and what is, what hours are useful for our residents.
Yes, I agree, Mary.
So, so let's...
And again, the people that I've contacted here, things I've seen on Facebook, um, they want more Saturdays out. They want to know what it used to be. And I explain why we can't, based on the, the, that we no longer have, because it's from Anoka County. And I, like Lori, um, in my conversations with them, they're not committed to coming back, or at least anytime soon.
They're not committed to...
Anoka County isn't committed to coming back.
Oh, 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 okay, okay. I need your back.
So, uh, I think we need to find a balance of hours, days, and, um, what that would cost us.
Right.
And again, I think that if, if we get 10 refrigerators, that only get paid for three of them, and we're picking up the cost for the other seven, because no one was there to make a payment, or somebody didn't know they weren't supposed to pay, um, that's an expense the city's picking up, and then it's the water and the battery that are picking up. If we're able to have staff, a good amount of time, and that staff person can provide education, can take, uh, the fees for the different items, I think in the one, we'll, we'll come out ahead.
I don't disagree with you.
Councilmember Alders?
But we need to give Lori some direction. It's like, do you want to, do we want her to staff it for 30 hours, 40 hours, or 20 hours?
Well, I, I guess, on the top of my head, Councilmember Alder, I need to put a pen to paper to look at what hours would be, so I know, um, so I can't answer that right now.
Okay. Let's do it.
I know other people are going to come, like other people don't want it to be open. I mean, how open?
No, we're just, we're just trying to, we're just trying to come to a conclusion.
No, that's not true, Mary. We all want it to be open. We just are trying to figure out reasonable hours for the amount of money we want to spend.
Right.
Well, what's reasonable for three of you that are studying that?
Well, how much are we paying this person, for one thing?
It's going to be 15 bucks an hour. I bet 12 to 15 bucks an hour.
Okay, 15 dollars an hour?
I don't think it's unreasonable to say it should stay open. I think it's the, that we need to have a little bit more tighter reins on it, so that we don't have the dumping and the foraging through things. And that's dangerous too, having somebody in there, sleeping in there, using it as a bathroom. Just maybe tighten it up a little bit.
I, I agree with you. Councilmember Raydell.
Just, to, sorry, but I agree too. Supervision is the key. You know, one of the things I'd like, and I have, we did it before, but put a sign on the door that says, "Please close the door."
Yeah, I, I, and there you are, then...
That's going to keep, anybody's common sense is going to see that, and they're going to close the door.
And the problem is, the common, the common sense people aren't. The ones that are using it as a bathroom, are sleeping overnight, and that's common sense people.
I propose we let them...
But, but if it's locked when they get there, then they can't get in there to stay overnight.
So, so if...
And the one door that's, that's the door to the east. And I go up there when I can, after, on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Saturdays, and try to pull it shut. And I know we, we, we had that repaired many times. There was a suggestion one time that we put a stop into the ground, so the door can't swing all the way open, so that it doesn't break it, so that it can't close and lock. I mean, if it's closed and locked.
All right, so at this point, it, it seems to be, the investigation should be, it's, if it's open, it's staffed.
Yes.
And if it's staffed, is it a 12, somewhere between 12 and 15 dollars an hour? How many hours a week that are most convenient for the users of the recycling center? So that has to be determined, and then we can go forward with the proposal from there.
Okay.
I, I think that, that the issues that we're dealing with, if it was staffed, the majority of them would go away. And if the, if the revenues that come in because we're, we're not spending money hauling off trash that shouldn't be there, and we are getting reimbursed for things we should get reimbursed for, at a minimum, we want to break even on this thing. And so those, that's the next investigation. Somebody needs to take it and say, what are the reasonable hours? At what cost? And make a proposal. Can we, can we say 20 hours?
Can we say 20 hours? Let's staff it for 20 hours a week. Have Lori figure out if we wanted eight hours on Saturday, that means they got 12 hours during the rest of the week. Have Lori figure out if we wanted eight hours on Saturday, that means they got twelve hours during the rest of the week. And say it's closed Mondays and split up twelve hours Tuesday through Friday. And Lori figure out the times depending on when, when we have people, because it's probably going to be an afternoon. And we got a shift on Saturday, or maybe it's six hours, have her deal with it, but it's like, it's, we're talking fifteen thousand dollars, or we're willing to invest fifteen grand into it because that's what's your, that's what it's going to cost if it's a fifteen dollar, I mean, you know, there's some more than that, but assume it's fifteen to twenty grand and for twenty, twenty hours a week year-round. So you got one part-time guy making fifteen bucks an hour.
Okay, can we table this one now? Mr. Mayor?
Yep. I mean, it's, so is that the council wants to pursue at this point?
Yes.
It sounds like that's what we ought to do.
Is that okay, Mary? We pursue twenty hours, uh, and maybe six or eight hours on Saturday like you want, and then divide up the other, the other hours among the week, maybe have it closed on Mondays, like Jason just said?
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raydell.
Twenty hours a week is two hours plus a week, and we're offering it now, and people aren't happy with that.
Oh, we don't have to give them anything, they're doing it two hours a week. I mean, we, now we're going to have it supervised. That's going to make a huge difference.
I, I, I think that, that right now Saturdays are more important than Tuesday mornings and Thursday mornings.
Exactly.
I, I would say, again, going back to many of the people using it that are working outside the city, having evening hours and Saturday hours are more important probably than, uh, nine o'clock Tuesday morning. But that's, that's a lead plan, we, we can always adjust. But let's start somewhere. If we were to have twenty hours, what would they look like? What are the prime hours for it?
Perfect.
All right?
Nice job.
And, uh, yeah, again, if you can do better on Saturdays, I think that, that will help most people's issues. At least two Saturdays out of the year is going to be the council's one there. All right, you also had one here on, uh, paper shredding for the recycling day.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raydell.
I, I think with, with thinking about offering something additional to our residents, um, they can bring anything, uh, they want during our, you know, our spring and fall event, that they can bring any other time that the center's open. Other than the ability to shred paper, that container is just a city office, and people have to come in and, um, deposit paper there. So, um, and I, did this, you guys have this RCA in front of you?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right. So I'm just wondering what council thoughts are about being able to offer that on Saturday and maybe?
My, my thoughts initially are, because we didn't get it in the newsletter, and so people wouldn't know about it. Um, that's a lot of money for no advertising to the people who know about it. So I would say, um, if we think this is a good idea, we'd probably have to wait till the fall so we could advertise it. Because otherwise, nobody's going to know to bring those papers up there. And having to pay a three-hour minimum, uh, with no benefit. I think it's too late for the spring event, and we should discuss it as far as the fall event. Lori, are people bringing things into the office or not?
Maybe once a month, we get somebody with a box, but not very often.
I think, I think we need to investigate this further, but it wouldn't be reasonable for something that's two weeks out.
I, 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 um, will put it in my pile for fall event.
Right? And then, uh, like you said, if people, I'm not sure people know that we have that city offices, but they're not using it maybe once a month or not. All right, it is.
Are we talking about the Mack truck here, and then we're done?
Nine thirty-six, and we got, I think that's what we got left of the Mack truck.
Yep.
So what do I do on the Mack truck? Mary, you have a ton of questions. Did your questions all get answered?
Yes and no. Um, and based on what I've, that's provided, um, I, I'm not comfortable in holding yes on the purchase of a vehicle, um, at, to, to this cost. Um, you know, we don't, you know, I don't know, we, we're in a big sales tax and an excise tax on that. That's not included in this. Um, I don't know why Joe, what, with a Mack truck versus other trucks? And I'm not a truck person, so, um, but a little bit, I talked to some people. Their mother, and why do you want a Mack versus a, I think it was a brake liner, or Peter and Del, I think was the other one. Um, and to not have, um, to have, I appreciate the information that was provided to us, but from the get-go, the numbers didn't line up. So nobody looked at what was being proposed, the little bit of dollar amount, and that dollar amount wasn't correct. It's not complete because the sales tax or excise tax is not included in there. Um, and we don't, I don't see why this truck was, what were the options that were looked at? Um, what, what is so much better in this truck than the other options available to the state bidding process? I am, you know, I still have questions about the, the keeping of the truck that they're saying. The reason we're buying this truck is because this old truck is going to cost all kinds of money, but yet they want to keep the truck. Well, we're looking at having to extend funds on fixing the truck. Then maybe we should trade that truck in or sell it outright, um, and get some money for it. Because once something didn't go on it, um, then we're down to a pile of nothing. And. So I, I, at this point, I, I cannot go to spend two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of taxpayer money without additional information.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
So with a capital purchase like this, so I'm just trying to get us back up a little bit because from a high level, it is crazy that we are looking at, should we use a seven-pin connector or a four-pin connector? Which transmission, which truck? At a high level, the city council should approve a certain amount of dollars for a capital acquisition, and then Lori and her team go out and find a truck for the price that meets the capital acquisition price. And if they choose to keep the truck or trade it in, that's all part, I mean, so I just want to like, help me understand the process because it like, if I'm Lori and I've got me or somebody else that knows nothing about trucks, asking a thousand questions on, why'd we pick this warranty? Why'd we pick this wiring harness? Why do we need two strobe lights? It's crazy. It's like, we trust her, and I don't know Joe, but everybody in here told me Joe is the expert. He went through this thing and line itemed it out and said, this is what we need for our city. And I agree, as council members, we need to be stewards of our cash. But once we made the decision to say, hey, we're going to spend a quarter million dollars on a new truck because we know it's time, the other one is shot, Lori, go get us a truck for a quarter million dollars that meets her requirements, and let her and her team do that. And we're not giving her that opportunity.
But, but I got to stop you there. We do have a capital improvement plan. It's two hundred thousand, not a quarter million.
So.
So, so already, we, we've gone over our plan without justification.
So then we need to go back to her and say.
That's not fair.
There is justification. She's been presenting.
Explaining this for months.
But then we need to go back there and say it's.
That's not fair.
It's two hundred grand. Can you get one for two hundred grand or not? And if the answer's no, then we need to decide, okay, we also had a plan of a mower. Do we not do the mower because the truck is going to cost more? Or if you can't get it for two hundred grand, why, or that's the number. Get it for two hundred grand. I mean, we just.
And that was, that was the original question, was when the numbers came in and, and they didn't line up. And I go back to Towmaster and say, hundred and three versus hundred and thirty is a big difference. We settled a hundred and seventeen.
But then we got into like emails back and forth of seven plug versus nine plug, this hydraulics versus that hydraulics. Why are we putting this engine in it? Should it need a nine speed or should we do an automatic?
We, again, not, not the, I don't, I don't know that anybody's questioning the engine or the training or, you know, the single frame or dual frame. It was, when, when, when Towmaster sent in their mixed-up document, and they had a nine-valve item for ten thousand and a twelve-valve, or a ten-valve for twelve thousand, it looked like a duplicate. So the question was asked, are these duplicates? Now Lori went back and answered, we need both hitches. It's not, because it looked like, pick one of these, pick one of these, pick one of these. And it wasn't clear, and Towmaster admitted that what we sent you and what we've got was goofy. And when they went back and said, yes, you need this one for the hydraulics and this one for the manifold, and you, yes, we need this and this and that. If, if the numbers were, were all right and it was within the budgeted area, and there would have been explanation, eighty thousand for the mower is not happening this year. When we first started a couple of years ago, and, and, and again, this is prior to Lori being here, we started looking at the capital improvement plan. What the council at the time would tell Joe is put a placeholder. You know, if you're going to need a truck at some time, put a placeholder. But by, even if you take a look at what we have in front of us, by the 2019 numbers, if that's when Joe started here, two hundred thousand wouldn't have done it.
So, so what are we authorizing her to spend for a truck?
Well, well, right now, the, the capital improvement plan as approved was two hundred thousand dollars.
So is the goal for her to go back to the team and say, can we get a truck for two hundred thousand? Do we have to de-feature it? Do we have to trade ours in?
Or do we have to revise our capital improvement plan?
Or do we have to revise the capital improvement, improvement plan?
Because, because Mack does tend to be a little higher than it. The, the, the other question, and it, it comes down to, because we haven't done this before, we haven't been through this process with Lori, and, and we, we just had, we bought a truck. We bought a fire truck, and we bought a, a road dream. And, you know, I think the truck was when we were still a township. And it was a little different back then because Joe drove down to Tennessee or somewhere to pick it up. This one here, while we, we do have a, a state plan, there are state plans for others, but when you go with a Mack engine instead of a Cummins engine, you are stuck now with Mack service warranty.
I to, totally get that, so I mean.
So when we get the warranty, what, what can, was again confusing because we've got an email here that says it comes with a hundred thousand miles and a three-year, two hundred fifty thousand lot. Well, our twenty-year-old truck has only a hundred and seventy-five thousand miles. The, the questions that would have been valuable upfront was, why an extra forty-three hundred dollars for a seven-year warranty? What, what is the need for that if we've got only a hundred and seventy-five thousand in twenty years?
Yeah, and my point is, if we're telling her she's authorized to spend up to two hundred grand, let her run with that. If she goes through all ten or twelve different makes of trucks and can't get one for that, and says, okay, we had a plan of two hundred for a truck, and we had a plan of eighty for a mower. I reviewed it with my team. We can't get a truck for two hundred, it's going to be two forty. Our team has found a used mower for forty that we think will work so we can hit the overall budget and get both, fine, or we're going to have to trade a truck in. But it's like, I, I mean, we're not, I'm not at a spot where I want to dig into truck specs and after Joe has already done it because it like totally kills his enthusiasm or try because he knows the next time he goes to buy something, why should I put any effort into it? Because they're going to tear it apart anyway.
And, and, and I will say, my, my question is, when I, I try specifically to stay away from the specs, except where it looked like duplicates. And numbers tip that up. When, when, when I get a bill and say, here's what it's going to cost, it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and I add two hundred and three, it looks like duplicates.
So that's, I mean, that's, I would say, good coaching for Lori to take back and say, hey, when we get, when we get it, we got to make sure that it feels like it makes sense from a costing standpoint. But I don't, to be honest, I don't even want to see that checklist of, it's got this connector, this connector, this connector. I want, here's a truck, it's going to cost two fifty, and here's what it's going to, here's what it's going to, it's going to serve our community because it has these features on it. So I want to just kind of get past, are we saying two hundred and fifty is too much and we can't afford it? And we've got to go back to Lori and say, we need something for two hundred? Or are we saying we can spend two fifty, but it's, it means giving up something else? Because we have, two fifty's it, and we are supposed to buy a truck and a mower?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's where the discussion should be. Here's, here's what we looked at. Um, and we can get a Mack for this, a Kenworth for this, a freightliner for this, and their equivalent trucks or the service record or whatever. You make the justification, but no longer is two hundred the, the number, here's what we need. And therefore, uh, eighty thousand dollar mower is not in the plan this year.
So what's, so what are we authorizing? I mean, are we telling her two fifty-seven plus seventeen in taxes is, is acceptable? Or does she need to go back and say, hey, guys, we, they got to de-feature this thing? Or figure out a different model because city can't afford two fifty-seven plus seventeen in taxes? What's the direction?
My opinion would be, what's a comparable? And, and, and if, if you're looking at comparables and they're all the same price, we have to have the discussion and say, okay, we jettison the mower and, or downgrade the mower and go for the truck.
So the next time that Lori comes to the council with a capital acquisition, do we want her to provide four different options or three different options?
What I'm seeing with, with other cities is you, you come with a justification when you do your capital improvement plan. The reason we're planning on this two years out is such and such. And, and then you come and you have some, some narrative background saying, we've checked, you know, four options, and the price and features, here's what we need. You know, like, I would do it work. You come in and say, here's, here's the machine I want, here's what it'll do, here's what we're authorizing the budget, and I can meet that, and I can make a proposal that puts that package together. I got a target price, I've got my competitive numbers, um, and what I needed to do is this, and this will do.
So, Mary and council, I came into this after it was already discussed. It had been discussed at the Roden Bridge Committee several years ago. It was added to the 2019 capital improvement plan with explanation on why they needed the truck and why they were planning for it. So I think that's all been done in the past. And my role was to bring the specs to you for approval at this point. And we did say that the eighty thousand dollar mower is taking a backseat because the truck was too much. We mentioned that at one of the last meetings. So if I need to go back and tell Joe that this is still too expensive, that he needs to look at different trucks? He had reasons why he didn't go with other trucks, but he didn't put them in writing and didn't, didn't pursue those trucks because there were certain reasons why he didn't care for the other brands of trucks. They were too high, couldn't see the, the truck back or the, he had all these different things he was telling me, but he didn't put them in writing. But he was firm on wanting the Mack truck for many reasons. So I just need direction. If we're not going to buy the truck, it's totally fine if council wants to vote on not buying the truck. We can put it to bed and just say we're not buying it and wait till the twenty-one-year-old truck dies. The only problem is that's not the best planning because then we don't have a truck. But I just need to know, if you just want to vote on it and call it quits? But I just need to know if you just want to vote on it and call it quits, we're fine with that.
Well, I I I think that it's a learning process. You know, we haven't gone through this with you before. I was there at the Roden Bridge and it was put placeholder. You're going to need a truck eventually. So it was was less. You know, our capital improvement plans were more put a placeholder because we know we're going to need something. And and you know, again, what is the justification? Again, we got a twenty year old truck, twenty year old truck sounds really old. It's a hundred and seventy five thousand miles, the training rebuilt is ten to fifteen thousand dollars. But you're without that truck when you're when it's being worked on. And and so we're no longer as aware of the fleet and what that truck is being used for. Is that the primary truck? Is is that the?
It's one of the main primary trucks, yes.
But knowing that that there are competitive models out there that might be less expensive, but Joe has a reason for saying. The reason I don't like X, Y, or Z is this would be helpful because then at least say, I've I've looked at that. But you know, we hear he's been working with us for two years or since twenty nineteen on this. We don't know what else he's done or why he's prefers this over that. I think it was very insightful when somebody asked about stainless steel and he said, no. Because it's pretty, but I can't work with it. And I can fix carbon steel, but I can't do stainless. That was a great answer and obviously Joe has reasons for most of it. That's why I stayed out of the specs other than when the numbers didn't add up. I just wanted to know, are we looking at choices versus? So when you answered the question, no, we need both trailer edges, no, we need both valve systems. Made sense. But the only reason I didn't have looked at any of that because I don't, you know, single frame, triple frame. Not my issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Blake.
I really feel like there needs to be, I I see your your points, I see Mary's point. But I also feel like there needs to be, we need to have confidence and express the confidence we have and the staff that we hired. That these people are doing a good job, that we trust them, that we know they're doing their best work for our community and for our city. And that that, I mean. If yeah, if Joe has chosen this truck, I just have confidence that he's chosen it because this is the best truck he can find for what he feels needs to be done to the city. And I need to say, oh, you have to show us all the reasons you did this. Just just kind of reeks of, well, we don't really trust you made a good decision. I mean, we need to. And and I think it just puts a division between the staff and us. Not that, and I know what you're going to say, we're responsible in the end for the for the cost of this truck. And this and all this, but also I think we overdo our questioning everything and trusting so little of what is presented to us. That maybe this person knows enough that we can trust their decision here. And if it's the money, we don't want to spend this, I get it, then just say that. And let's go forward and if you don't want the truck, let's vote, vote against the truck, I mean.
Well, I, one thing is it's a quarter million dollars. A quarter million dollars is out of people's money. I think it's important that we're responsible.
I knew, I said, I know you're going to say that and I agree with you on that.
But when I when I make a proposal at work, it's. Yes, I'm I need to do the research and make sure I can answer the executive's questions is why do you need that piece of equipment? What are you going to do with it? And why that one versus something else?
Well, maybe I need to ask Joe that, but I think at this time, this has been present, we've been going over this and going over it. And they've been answering the questions to the best of their ability and we're still not satisfied. So I mean, let's be direct. If the problem is the price. Then let's say it's off the table. We can't afford this, we'll wait for the other one to break down.
Well, I I don't think it has to be that black and white. What can we do for the price that we put in our budget?
Well, she already said they're going to, they're going to put off the the mowers so that we can repair the truck. But that's not acceptable?
I have I have no other trucks to compare to. And Joe may have that, he may have said, here's what I've done or here's here's reasons I, you know, this is the first time Lori has said. Joe ruled out all these other trucks because of certain features.
You didn't hear what Lori said.
So do we, I'm just, so I'm just trying to get the process right so we can make this less painful the next time. Because it is a bit of a, it it's my first time going through this. So we just put in a super expensive paint system into our facility last year. And we had three systems and we narrowed it down to one with a pew matrix or some decision criteria. And then we took the proposal to my boss because it was over a million bucks and said, this is the system that we're going with. We looked at these other two, here's what their prices were, this is the features and benefit of this one, this is why we're choosing this one. And we, you know, we were got, we were authorized to spend two point nine. And if it wasn't more than two point nine, it was a no go. If it was less than two point nine, that's great, right? So I'm just trying to get Lori, if when the mower comes up or the truck, if we've got to rehash this thing one more time. I don't want to do, I'm not going through seven pin versus nine pin. Is if the expectation is, hey, the target's two hundred and we're over target. We looked at two other alternatives besides the MAC, they were both over two hundred as well. And this one's whatever it ends up being, three thousand dollars more, five thousand dollars more, but it has this benefit and this benefit. And per Joe, that's what we need for this, the way we plow snow or the way we haul gravel, whatever. I think that's reasonable to go back, but we can't, I mean, we can't, I I don't want to go through and spec out the truck for them. It's like they know what they need. If we tell them it's, if we tell them two hundred is the budget and they can't get to two hundred. And they looked at a couple of alternatives and none of them are that. And they come up and say, they're all over two hundred, we proposed this one and we proposed pushing the mower out next year because we've looked at it. We think it'll last one more year. That's a solid proposal.
Okay, so you're going to go back then and tell Joe that he needs to come with some of the reasons why he chose this one over the others, right? This is what we want?
I I'm just trying to get a process.
Well, that's kind of a mayor's saying the same thing.
I'm I'm just trying to get the process.
I think there's a combination of that and what Jason is saying is I got three competitors here, I've got a cap. And I'm picking this one because it's within the budget and it has these features that we're looking for as opposed to these don't. So I think that, you know, Joe looks at this and says, I want MAC for this reason, but these others, Peterbilt or Kenworth or Freightliner or whoever else.
Right.
They have those same features for less money or they have the same price, but they don't have the features. That's what we're looking for, saying, why would you pick this over that?
And I don't think that that, I mean, I personally don't know that. Because I don't, I mean, I look at the, if I use the micromanaging term, micromanaging is like when you're going. I feel like when you're going through spec by spec and like, why did you pick this? Why'd you pick, I think if you have, Lori did an awesome job with the recycling proposal. We need a new truck. Here's the three that we looked at. Here's what the three prices were when we looked at three competitive bids for three similarly equipped trucks. We picked this one. It's five thousand dollars more, but per Joe, it has these three things that we need. This is what we need to go with. Everything is over the budget. We think we're going to trade the truck in because that's going to save us some or we don't, we are only going to get five thousand dollars for the truck. So it doesn't, we're going to keep it because it's worth more than that to us and we're going to hold off on the mower.
And maybe they're going to come up with, Mary, it's Linda, maybe they're going to come up with, there is, I mean, this was two years ago or three years ago, it gave me this amount of money. Maybe you can't get a truck for two hundred thousand anymore.
And I'm guessing you're right, I mean, I'm guessing.
And that's what he has to tell us because it's, you know, it probably would have been good for Joe to be here actually in some.
I'm just trying to get the process that makes it less painful.
paint felt, Senator Raynor.
Um, I, you know. We are elected officials, we are responsible for the taxpayer's money and spending it in a fiscally responsible manner. I'm not looking at what the difference. Specs, I have a question on the. Extended warranty in order to answer my question, I had to find out what do we have on our truck now? And you know what, maybe had, and I don't want to be disrespectful about to anybody, but maybe had the original documents that we received. Those numbers lined up, I wouldn't have done looking through to figure out why aren't these numbers lining up? And government is different than private business. We're not spending profits of a corporation, we're spending taxpayer dollars. And it's important that we do it correctly. If Joe has been looking at trucks since twenty nineteen. Why did we not hear about that? This is what we're thinking of doing, this is what we need. And then with a proposal. Why didn't we get one other one to talk back? Again, this is taxpayer's dollars, this is not a corporation's profit. It's taxpayer dollars and we're responsible for spending them wisely. And wisely means we have the full, we have all of the information that we need to be comfortable in in making a vote, taking a vote. And and again, I don't want to be disrespectful, but the initial information we received. The numbers weren't lining up. What if, what if we didn't add those up? And we were charged a hundred and whatever it was from Towmaster, which really wasn't the concept. Because they're good with all these stuff.
Mayor and Council.
Was it right in a check for something that we didn't, you know, I mean, it's just. We need to be, I need to be comfortable with. An explanation as to what was looked into, why was option A not chosen? Why was option B not chosen? This is why we chose option C. We're spending a quarter of a million dollars of somebody else's money.
And and I I do, I do think. You know, to Jason, to your point, the only reason some of those line items got looked at, the numbers didn't add up. And it looked like choices rather than we need them both. And that, you know, to led to your point, if Joe had been here, he said, yeah, that one towed this trailer, that one towed that trailer, that's why I need two hitches or three hitches. And this one operates the tailgate, this operates this, the wing, and that's why I need two sets of valves at twenty thousand dollars.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I think.
But but the only reason it came up was because the numbers didn't add up.
Well, and the reason the numbers didn't add up is it's been going on since two thousand nineteen and they've been going back and forth on adding things or removing things. And the Towmaster bill has been adjusted several times, but that all would have come out in the, when we get the okay to purchase. We're going to be going through every single line item and making sure we're getting what we're asking for. Everything is adding up before they would receive any check.
So wouldn't that make sense to do that before we get the?
That's correct.
The request. So how do we move forward here because it's ten ten? So are we getting, are we asking, are we comfortable saying as a city, we're okay to spend two hundred and seventy thousand on a truck? Or are we saying, we're not comfortable spending two seventy? We only want to spend two hundred if we can't spend, if we got to spend more than two hundred, we want to see two competitive bids?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Raynor.
I I'm not comfortable spending two hundred and seventy thousand dollars without justification. That would be my answer.
So to to Jason's point, you want to see the competitive saying, why they're all this priced? And these are the best features. So if 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 all of them are two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, then you go on the features. If if one is two hundred and seventy and one is two hundred and twenty and the features are similar, then probably go with the two twenty.
So what I'm hearing is we authorized Lori to spend two hundred. It was more than two hundred, so as a team, when you go over what we authorize for a capital expenditure, we want to see. At least two competitive bids, maybe three competitive bids to see what our options are from a cost standpoint. And then justification on why we went with option A or B or option A.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Raynor.
And another thing, this, what we place money in in a column, it's a placeholder, it's not. That that money is not obligated to be spent. So, um. Again, justification is important because if we are going to spend, we do need that justification. Um, you know, another part that for me is I was trying to figure out the twenty one, twenty old one sterilize. If it's so bad that we have to replace it, why are we keeping it? But maybe it's not so bad, do we need to replace it?
That was just a recommendation or suggestion.
You know, what's the value of it now, Lori provided an insurance value? But what's the value if we put that on, I don't want to say EBITA, but you know, if we put it up for for sale, what's the value there? But then what's the value if we hold on to it in the transition of Insel? And what do we get for? I mean, we have to look at those things because we'll have to deal with the ramifications of that down the road. Whether we should continue to repair that old truck or we sell it to staff, there's a value for your dollar. We need to know those things, I mean, I, you know, I can only speak for myself.
Yeah, and Mary, I think what I want to get to is, I want to get to.
It's Jason.
I want to get to a process where we can empower the team to make a recommendation that we can support. Because right now it feels like Lori brings us something, we shoot it down, she goes back, answers a bunch of questions versus via email. She comes back, we're not happy with that and we've been talking about this truck for three different meetings now and we still don't have a decision. So if we're telling her that two hundred is the number, get it for two hundred, that's what you're authorized to spend. Then her and her team can go back and figure that out and maybe trading a truck in is part of that solution. I don't know, but that's can be on them. Maybe they can go back and look at the features and get it down to two hundred. Or maybe they have to look at a different brand. If they come back and say, none of them are two hundred thousand, here's the two different, three different trucks that we looked at, here's what their costs are. Here's our recommendation, it's more than two hundred. We know our overall budget for new capital this year is two eighty. We know that we also wanted a mower and we're going to push that off into twenty twenty two. So our recommendation is to spend more on the truck and hold off on the mower. And here's what we deal is, here's what we believe is the best value. That's.
Bingo.
What I want.
That's what we're looking for.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Raynor.
And and that's what we're going to have to begin with.
So then we need to give her some direction.
Again, I obviously need to be disrespectful to Lori because this is her first time. Last time we purchased a truck, Joe bought in the specs from different vehicles. He says, this is why I want this, this is why I want this, but this is why I don't want that. If we're going to, if council's going to ask why you're spending a quarter of a million dollars. Council needs to have that information in front of them. Again, this is taxpayer's dollars and they expect us to.
And and we agree, we've heard that. And and this is our first time physically, you know, again, it's one of those, we don't buy quarter million dollar trucks every year. Some cities do, but we don't. And and so previous capital purchases like this, Lori wasn't part of the program. So to Jason's point, let's get a process that we that we can live with. And and as you explained it, I think you hit it right on. You know, here's, here's what we authorized and and if we were under it, we learn in our new capital plans to to be better with that. Um, but if prices being what they are these days, I've got competitive offers here and they're all the same. We address it budget wise. If there's something lower and it's the equivalent, we we got to win. If we've got something that's feature wise, this is a little more, but the features are better, then Joe can explain that to us. But but I think that you go in with your, a good target price and a capital plan to adjust accordingly, but you know why.
Mr. Mayor, I like the idea that we're empowering them with a process so that when she comes with something, she's followed the process and it can come to us and be done. Because she's like floating in the air about while this is the whole story.
It's frustrating as heck, right?
Yeah. So that's the idea, get a process.
Councilmember Ray.
I'm sure I'm very frustrated to Lori. I can't see her, but I can imagine her pulling her hair out. So, but, but again, this is not, you know, this is our first time doing it. And, you know, the close back of communication between the council staff, what are we doing, what are we looking at this month? So we've been looking at this since 2019. Why didn't we know that? But, you know...
So are you clear?
More information, the quick back of those meetings we had with the lead, more information is better. More information helps not to have that cloud of significance truck. And that's, you know, because we apply to things going forward. Having information in front of us helps us make better decisions.
But, Mr. Mayor, once, once we do bend the procedure and they follow it, then we have to let it go and trust them.
Yeah.
We can't keep getting at it if we decide...
And again, we get a good process in place. That's the whole point.
There it is.
So the whole point of this is, is we can get back up to the 30,000-foot level and say, where are we going as a group as opposed to what's the minutia of the tactical? So...
You and I won't see the beach.
So can we circle back so that Lori's got clarity on what we're doing with this truck?
This is Jason speaking.
So are we going to ask her to go back since it's more than 200,000? Because I heard 200,000 is what we've kind of targeted, right?
That was what was in the capital plan.
So if the machine is over the budget from a capital plan, so are we asking her to go get back with Joe and get one or two other competitive bids?
Or he maybe has them already.
He maybe has them already so that we can put that together and say, here's the Mack truck, here's the other two manufacturers that we looked at. They're all over 200,000. We think we should trade the truck in on it to try to lower the capital cost because we want to hit that. Or we think that we should keep the truck, and we know we're over, but we looked at the other capital of equipment, which is a lawnmower, and we think we can hold off on that, and we'll do that for 2022 because we don't think we can get what we need for 200. And we believe that keeping the 2001 Sterling is the right decision because it's a backup and et cetera, et cetera. And have her bring that recommendation back so that we can say, here's three choices. This is the one they picked. This is why it's over our capital plan. Or you know what? We went back because you told us 200 is the number, and we figured out how to get it to 200, and we're moving forward.
Are you okay, Lori? That's the question.
Great.
Okay.
All right. So this meeting wasn't shorter than this.
I just brought a sleeper here.
Jason. What's that?
That's the sort of problem. Oh, I would say, I just said, I would bring the top-level cost of each truck. I would not bring these spec sheets to the, the signal lights are 100 bucks. The guards are 44 and...
Well, the intent was, the intent was to provide as much information as possible because I know that some of the council members like a lot of information. So that's what we thought we were doing.
Well, and I think, see, that's where we need to communicate. I think that's one of the things we talked about in workshop. The, the line item, again, I'm not going to go through engine exhaust and tank options. It means nothing to me. Other than by having the details that look like duplicates. And I think the Towmaster just added to the confusion because whatever happened, if they gave us a printout, the numbers were $28,000 off.
Right.
And so you're looking at, maybe it's duplicates, maybe it's choices. Maybe that's what happened. But as far as the rest of it, I'm never going to go toe-to-toe with Joe on why this rear end versus that rear end.
Totally agree.
I do know that...
Is this my picture?
That if you got a Mack warranty, only Mack can work on it. You got a Cummins, anybody can. That's as far as I can go.
We got one more motion?
Can we adjourn? I motion we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, we are adjourned.
Perfect.
Good night everyone.
Good night.
You could use it again next time.
Thank you. And then I have something for you.
This is a raise?
That's for next Tuesday's...
I just take it upon myself. You know how it is.